We are now recording. Broughton. I see trustee Broughton is on screen, but he is on mute. Okay, Chen? Here. Cisneros?
Here.
De La Cruz?
Here.
Dylan? Here. Duran?
Here.
Ganong?
Here.
Selig? Shelby?
Present.
So?
Present.
Stallings?
Here.
Tony?
Present.
You have a quorum chair.
This is Mark Broughton, I'm here also.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Again, thank you, everyone, for your patience as we finished up the RAD closed session agenda. This is the beginning of the Board of Trustees' two days' worth of meetings. We have some business on our agenda, as well as our strategic planning session and more or less retreat. We've all been looking forward to that. This meeting is being conducted remotely due to the ever-changing situation with the COVID-19 virus and the Omicron variant. I certainly appreciate all the work of our staff in facilitating today's sessions. I appreciate everyone who is attending virtually. And that brings us to the portion of the meeting for public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on the agenda or any item of interest to the Board of Trustees within our subject-mannered jurisdiction. You can indicate your willingness to, your desire to address the board by using the raise hand function on the Zoom application. If you're joining us by phone, you can so indicate by pressing star and then the number nine. And we will go ahead and let the attendees list populate with folks who want to address the board. You'll have up to three minutes. And we have three folks so far. I will start with Karen Thomas, and I'm going to guess Stefano. Ms. Stefano, if I've got it wrong, I apologize. When your microphone is unmuted, you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me? Am I unmuted?
You're good. Thank you.
Okay. On behalf of the Consumer Protection Policy Center, formerly known as the Center for Public Interest Law at the University of San Diego School of Law, I want to address the board concerning the Closing the Justice Gap Working Group. It feels like the board has backed down in response to the December 7th letter from the Senate and Assembly Judiciary Chairs. But I urge you all to take a stand, to fight for this program. I urge you to push back, to ask, why not let the working group continue? What's the harm? Let this process move forward. Let the working group complete its study, issue its report, gather public comment, make their recommendations. And I focus these comments toward all of you, but particularly toward the public members of this board. This is why you all are here, to resist lawyer control over legal services regulation. And as you know, the state bar's priority is to protect the public. Consumers will benefit from innovation in legal services. And the state bar must be allowed to fulfill its statutory mission to serve the public and increase access to justice. So again, fight back against efforts to shut down this mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lucy Rika, Rika maybe? Ms. Rika, once your microphone is unmuted, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
All right. Hello all, my name is Lucy Rika. I am the Director of Policy and Programs at the Stanford Center on the Legal Profession. I'm also a member of the Closing the Justice Gap Working Group. I want to make two points for you to consider as you look forward to your strategic planning meetings and to supplement my colleague Jason Solomon's written comment to the board. First about the membership of this board, and second on the lack of plausible alternatives in moving the needle on A to J. I want to pause first on this board. I want to say to all of you that you have been here before. At this meeting in May 2020, the board considered a radically scaled-back charter for the Closing the Justice Gap Working Group, having delayed a vote the meeting before citing concerns of stakeholders. Now we have a letter from the Judiciary Chairs, perhaps prompted by the concerns of these same stakeholders, but nothing has changed in the underlying fact. You knew in May 2020 that any proposed changes will bring some fear of increased competition to the incumbent members of the bar, and you know that same thing now. But led by the public members on this board in May 2020, you voted to go forward with a robust effort to test innovative ways of delivering legal services. And I hope that you will continue, let that work continue now. As you know, the state bar is an independent regulatory agency responsible for the interests of the public. It is not any longer a professional association whose role is to protect the interests of its members. And the board is made up of appointees from all three branches, five from the Supreme Court, four from the governor, three from the legislature. That the Supreme Court has the most appointees is appropriate. Most of what the bar does is regulate the practice of law squarely under the authority of the court. It would be inappropriate for the legislature's views to override this process. And what does the court want? All signs indicate that they want this work to go forward. The court's liaison has been constructively engaged, and the Chief Justice, in a quote to reporters responding to the Judiciary Chair's letter, said that the concerns were not surprising, but saying, well, what's the alternative then? What are we going to do? Just throw up our hands and say nothing? And she's right, there are no plausible alternatives to the paraprofessional program in the sandbox for moving the needle on access to justice. One critical part of the bar's mission is access to justice, and the question is how to best advance that mission. The two critical components to emerge from AIDIL's task force were the paraprofessional program and the regulatory sandbox. Both of these are necessary for us in California to have a shot at improving access to justice for our citizens.
Ms. Rika, you have 20 seconds remaining. Thank you.
Thank you. As someone who engages with people around the country on these issues every day, I can tell you that more lawyers, more legal aid funding, and more pro bono are simply not plausible alternatives to these initiatives in terms of having a meaningful impact on increasing access to legal services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rika. Tom Gordon, Mr. Gordon, you have three minutes. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Tom Gordon. I'm the Executive Director of Responsive Law. We are a national nonprofit organization, speaking on behalf of consumers of legal services. As previous commenters have noted, the state bar is an independent regulatory agency, and it shouldn't be bullied by lawyers or by the Assembly Judiciary Committees. The state bar demonstrated this independence when it created the working group on Closing the Justice Gap by a very large majority. There have been red herrings thrown out by the Judiciary Committee's letter. They mentioned the mission to protect the public. That is an important part of the state bar's mission. That mission also includes, I quote, "supportive efforts for greater access to and inclusion in the legal system." The letter from the Judiciary Committee suggests that only attorney discipline somehow counts as public protection, and that supporting the work of a group of volunteers working to study the cause of problems, study the cause of problems and access to justice is somehow related to problems in the attorney discipline system. We're not asking for the board to approve sudden or drastic changes to the rules governing provision of legal services. We're not even asking today for the board to establish a regulatory sandbox, test how these new rules might affect consumers. We're just asking for the board to allow a very measured, some might even say plotting, process to continue to study how regulation of legal services can better serve consumers of those services. This has been a very slow and deliberate process. The AIDIL's task force was formed in the middle of 2018, which led to the current Closing the Justice Gap Working Group. After that, any decisions, recommendations of that working group will go to the state bar and the Supreme Court, and if necessary, the legislature. We're looking at a minimum of four, probably five years from start to finish of anything taking effect. Compare this to Utah, which started its task force to study these issues in 2018 and approved the creation of a sandbox about a year later. Arizona created a task force in November of 2018, and it's already been a year since they eliminated completely Rule 5.4's prohibition on non-lawyer ownership. This process has been dominated by the voices of lawyers who have been trying to preserve a status quo that's served them well, even while it's made legal help unaffordable for most Californians. And now the Judiciary Committee is echoing the trade associations for lawyers, saying that this process should be curtailed before it even reaches its finish.
Mr. Gordon, you have 20 seconds remaining.
Consumers, to allow these volunteers to finish their work and continue to let lawyers and legislators and the public weigh in as that process continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Next, we have Natalie Nolton. Ms. Nolton, you'll have three minutes. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Natalie Nolton, and I am the Director of Special Projects at the University of Denver-based Institute for the Advancement of the American Legal System. Respectfully, I offer the following comments on the Closing the Justice Working Group. Today, I am reminded of the controversy surrounding ABA Resolution 115 encouraging regulatory innovation. Bar leaders from states around the country voice vehement opposition to a resolution that simply encourages jurisdictions to consider innovative approaches. Indeed, the mission of the working group here is to explore what an ecosystem of experimentation might look like. There should be nothing inherently threatening in considering options. Yet here, as with Resolution 115, special interest groups within the legal profession are working to halt the conversation before it has really begun. The time to raise objections to the existence of the group has passed. The working group has underway for over a year now, and as Tom Gordon pointed out, AIDIL's has been underway since before then. The time to provide substantive comment on the yet-to-be-published recommendations has not yet arrived. The state bar is an independent regulatory agency that has established committee processes. There exists here no compelling reason to give in to sudden and inappropriate interruptions of that process. If the board sunsets the working group unfinished, what are the implications going forward with legislative interference and work the state bar deems valuable? What are the implications on the reputation of the bar as a vehicle for public protection and access to justice? The time for lawmakers to reject the sandbox proposal is when it appears before them, not before. Let the legislators kill this recommendation when it is presented to them, so that their constituents are clear on where their lawmakers stand on legal innovation and access to justice. I appreciate the difficult and unfair position that these lawmakers have put you in. But supporting efforts for greater access to the legal system is part and parcel of the bar's mission, and the work you are doing here is incredibly needed. The working group must be allowed to finish its work. Please do not foreclose this opportunity for public comment on the empirically informed recommendations that will emerge from this group. Consumer attorneys do not speak for consumers. Attorneys do not speak for the public. Members of the public must be allowed to speak for themselves. And what will the public have to say about our dedication to public protection if we do not let them be heard on this issue? Thank you for hearing my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Nolton. I don't see any other raised hands in the attendee list. I will make one last call for public comment with thanks to the three people who joined us to offer comment. Okay, we will move on with our agenda. The first item on the agenda is item number 10, the open session minutes of November 18th and 19th, 2021. Trustees, do you have any questions, any additions, any corrections to those minutes?
I'll move approval of the minutes. It's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cisneros. Is there a second?
Second, Sonia Dylan.
Thank you, trustee Dylan. May I have a vote, please?
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Ganong?
Yes.
Selig?
Shelby? Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll move to item 30.1 under the Chair's report. This is requested approval of revised committee liaison and special assignments list. That list has been provided to you, trustees. When you reviewed it, you'll note a couple of proposed changes that I'm asking you to approve today. The first is to add trustee Christine Ganong as the appointments liaison with trustee Shelby. Two great minds at work there, I think, would serve our organization very well. And then the second is a replacement of outgoing or outgone trustee Josh Protula with Sonia Dylan on admissions. Are there any questions or comments or discussion on this item, other than mine to say thank you very much to trustees Ganong and Dylan for answering the call of service? I certainly appreciate your willingness to serve. Okay, seeing no questions, may I have a motion?
This is Brandon. I'll move it.
Shelby, I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Vote, please.
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Ganong?
Yes.
Selig? Shelby? Shelby?
Sorry, aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you for that. So as that last item just made clear, Josh Protula is no longer a member of the Board of Trustees, his term having expired at the end of last year. We certainly await the Senate's appointment of an attorney member as his replacement. But before I move on to the next item on the agenda, I just wanted to take the privilege of the Chair to express my personal thanks to Josh for all of his very, very diligent and hard work over the years in service to the bar and to the public. I joined the board in late 2018. Josh had already been a member for a year or two, I believe. And it was very obvious to me upon arrival that he took his duties very seriously. He was very studious of the items before us, was never shy about raising important points and questions and engaging in respectful debate with his fellow trustees and supporting the work of the staff. In particular, Josh did a tremendous amount of work on issues, as he was the admissions liaison, surrounding the bar exam and the changes to our admissions system, including efforts like dealing with Cut Score, and most importantly, when the pandemic hit in 2019, looking at ways to make sure that what we were doing with respect to the bar exam and other admissions issues was responsive to the needs of the public at a very critical time. I think folks know that he was the Chair of the Blue Ribbon Commission on the bar exam. And so I would like to ask that we prepare, I will prepare some formal written acknowledgement and thanks to Josh. And with your permission, trustees, I will extend your own, I will extend the board's expression of thanks for his work. Anybody have anything to add? Okay, move on to the Executive Director's report. Ms. Wilson, good morning.
Good morning. So I just have brief comments at this juncture of the meeting. I want to use this time to update the board on issues pertaining to the sale of 180 Howard Street. We had committed to coming back in January with this status update, and this is your update. So last year, we issued a formal request for proposals for brokerage services with respect to the sale. The responses were due on Friday. We did receive several proposals, and we expect to select the broker such that we can bring that contract to the board for approval at your upcoming February meeting. Concurrent with that process, we have engaged the State Department of General Services. As you will recall, there's been some interest in our working with DGS to the extent possible under various scenarios, including approaching DGS about buying our building, buying another building on our behalf, or serving as our leasing agent. So those preliminary conversations have begun. There is going to be a formal meeting between the state bar and sort of the appropriate level of staff at DGS in the next few weeks, and so we will have definitive answers to the question of the role that DGS may be able to play with respect to the sale and/or future lease or purchase of another building. So I think we're on track in light of the board's action directing sale of the building in the summer of 2022. So these are my remarks for this point in the meeting. Chair, Duran. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for the Executive Director? Thank you for staying on top of that, Leah. Okay, that'll move us to the consent calendar. Would any trustees, I see you, trustee Soell? Does that mean you would like to remove an item from the consent calendar or ask a question?
I didn't get to my, get off mute fast enough, Mr. Chair. I did have one question for Ms. Wilson.
Okay, go ahead.
Leah, the conversation with DGS, could that actually preclude us from actually having to go through with the RFP and retain a brokerage firm?
No, my understanding is that DGS is not going to be, one, not going to be purchasing our building, and two, not going to be acting as our selling agent. There may be some options, however, with respect to serving on our behalf in terms of looking to lease specifically another space. So I think the initial conversation has ruled out some possibilities.
Any other questions for Leah?
I think Sonia has her hand up.
Okay, trustee Dylan?
Oh, I'm actually on the consent agenda 50-4.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no questions for Leah, we will move on to consent. Trustee Dylan, do you have a question or a comment or a desire to remove something? You're still on mute.
I do have a comment on 50-4 in reading about the COVID protocols. And in, I just want to find out, in reading both that and also for later, I just see, I saw that the protocol is for vaccination. Johnson &amp; Johnson, Pfizer, and Moderna, two vaccinations, but there's no discussion or guidance on booster shots. And so I was just, I just want to, just because the amino medical experts and health officials, you know, continue to emphasize that receiving the booster is critical to the safety of and protection of the, you know, of everyone. So I was, I just said it's silent on the booster shots.
Looks like we have Donna Herskowitz, who just promoted. And I will turn that over to Leah or Donna, whoever you prefer.
Do you want to take that, Donna, or do you want me to?
So, shall I just present the whole item and then we can sort of talk to that piece, or?
If you're going to do, I think it probably would not be a bad idea to present the whole item. In that case, with Sonia's permission, could I ask that we, I will pull 50.4 for separate discussion. Let's take a motion on the rest of the consent calendar and then take up 50.4.
Agree.
Can I have a motion on the consent calendar, please?
So say I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second. De La Cruz?
Thank you, trustees. Maybe we have their roll call, please.
Broughton?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Chen?
Yes.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Ganong?
Yes.
Selig?
Shelby? Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That takes us to 50-4. Ms. Herskowitz, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, trustees. On December 10th, the board's executive committee was convened and adopted a requirement that all February 2022 bar exam test takers provide the state bar with either proof of full vaccination or a negative test results for a COVID-19 test taken within 72 hours of the start of the bar exam. That requirement would have applied to all indoor mega events, as defined at that time as indoor events with more than 1,000 participants. But there was no similar requirement that was in place for smaller test sites. The executive committee action, and the executive committee is acting under its delegated authority to act on behalf of the board in between meetings. The executive committee recognized the importance of treating all test sites the same and ensuring that the protections were equally applied. And so made the, adopted the policy that for all test sites, people would be required to show proof of vaccination or proof of negative test results. Since the time of that board meeting, there have been two relevant updates to state public health orders. The first, which actually issued the business day following the board's, the board executive committee's action. The first provided that for those who were attending mega events with proof of negative test results, as opposed to proof of vaccination, that test now needed to be taken within 24 or 78 hours of the start of the event, down from 72 hours. The 24 or 48 is depending on the type of test, the antigen or a PCR. The second update to the state's public health orders changed the definition of mega event from events of 1,000 or more to events of 500 or more. Although the executive committee resolution included authority for staff to develop the specific procedures for implementation of the board's adopted policy, because the policy specifically referenced the 72-hour requirement and applied to test sites that wouldn't otherwise be covered by the state public health order, staff believed that it was necessary for the board to officially revise the policy. And additionally, because we can't predict whether there may be any changes to public health orders before the administration of the bar exam set for next month, staff requests and recommends that the board delegate authority to staff in consultation with the board's admissions liaison, Ms. Dylan, to revise the policy as needed. With regard to Ms. Dylan's, the issue that Ms. Dylan just raised, the decision was made that, with regard to what vaccination? It was extended to any vaccination that is, that authorizes you to get into the country. And so there are lists of accepted vaccination types on the CDC website that are accepted by the CDC and the World Health Organization that allow you to come into the country. Those are the list of vaccines, so it is broader than the three, broader than Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna, and Pfizer that we are allowing for individuals. We did not extend the requirement that people had to have the boosters for fear that, one, because we didn't have all of the information about, because that's more than is required to get into the country. And we don't have all the information about what the booster situation is for international vaccinations. And we have been monitoring the state public health orders, obviously, as well as local public health orders in all of the jurisdictions in which the bar exam will be administered and surrounding jurisdictions. So, you know, one of the things that we saw was in, I think it was the city and county of San Francisco, for city employers, the requirement was that there would be proof of, that full vaccination included boosters. But we haven't seen that, we don't have a test site in San Francisco, and we haven't seen that in other jurisdictions, but we are keeping a close watch on all of those. But we felt that requiring the booster, there might not be sufficient time for individuals to get the booster, and it might apply inconsistently to those who are coming from other countries to sit for the bar exam.
Thank you, Ms. Herskowitz. Trustee Dylan, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Mr. Tony, trustee Tony, good morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Duran. I have a hard time with this resolution for several reasons. One is, I don't believe it's safe to bring that many people together for hours and hours at a time indoors to take the test. I think we, as a state bar, should be doing everything we can to convince the health officials, the governor, to issue whatever orders are necessary so that we can have the, this test online. That's my, that's my first position. My second one is, I'm not happy about letting people in to this large event without being vaccinated, period. I don't think that, with, with the fact that we, from what we know about the negative, the false negatives that some of these tests produce, I think if you're not vaccinated, you don't show up. I think it's very clear, if it's going to be in person, I also agree, we should have maximum protection, which means boosters. So I'm pretty, I'm, I'm, I'm not satisfied with what we have in front of us.
Thank you, trustee Tony. Either Leah or Donna, any response to the concerns or the questions that Mr. Tony has raised?
Well, I, I think, I personally share the concern about the requirement that we hold an in-person exam and as, I believe the board is aware, that is the decision that stems from our reliance on the National Conference of Bar Examiners to deliver a significant portion of our exam. And they are requiring an in-person administration absent a state public health order. So I agree with the concern and there's nothing we can do about that. With respect to the booster, as Donna indicated, we have been trying to carefully track or mirror state public health orders and local public health orders. And other than San Francisco, to my knowledge, there is no jurisdiction that is requiring that booster shot to satisfy the fully vaccinated status. That may change, and I believe that this item does intentionally provide staff with the authority to change the protocol pursuant to guidance as it develops, and that's precisely why. So, you know, I, I believe and anticipate that we will likely see coming from the CDC itself that full vaccination means you have a booster and that will have significant implications for staff in, in, in all facets of our work. But we're just not there yet. The board could, of course, today decide that you want to impose that requirement. I do think, and probably you'll hear more from Vanessa on, on that, but it would present some risks for us imposing a booster requirement and vaccination without a testing option. But that, that's a decision for the board to make.
The CDC did update the definition of up to date. They didn't, they didn't change the definition of full vaccination, right? So up to date now does include boosters.
So there's, there's two issues that are raised by this conversation. One is, what is full vaccination? In fact, many aren't even calling it booster anymore. They're calling it a three-dose vaccination. The other is the paradigm for test takers, whether we are requiring vaccination only or giving them the opportunity to test. On the first one, this board could decide full vaccination includes the booster. That, we'd have to see if that presents any operational problems with the bar exam in about a month for individuals to be able to get that or, or, or not take the bar exam. The reason that the, on the second issue, the reason that the second, the paradigm was allowing an election to test is that the burden of requiring vaccine only, like we do for our employees and the board, you know, a smaller group of people, is that you then have to enter, among other things, you have to entertain religious and medical exemptions. That is a long, burdensome process on both sides. The administrative burden for, for the bar to entertain those exemptions and grant them and the, and the individuals to have to go get them and engage in the interactive process with us. It's just kind of operationally difficult, if not impossible, I think, to implement for an exam of this size.
Thank you, Ms. Holton.
Mr. Chair, I would also note that although obviously the protection of our staff and our test takers and our proctor is of the utmost concern, the, the, the staff did act accordingly based on the decision that was made by the executive committee on December tenth to enter into a contract with CLEAR. And we had deadlines for individuals to submit proof of vaccination. And although certainly not, not all, all of those who are projected to attend the exam have yet uploaded that proof of the vaccination, we would essentially need to, need to start that process again. And, and provide different requirements for CLEAR in terms of what they would have to be looking for. And, and I don't know if they would be in a position to do that. So that, that, that effort might, might be irrelevant if, if we go forward with, with a change of this magnitude.
So that's with respect to the booster component, okay. Trustee Sol, I saw your hand go up and then go down.
I think I'm gonna take a pass.
I do have one, one question, and I think I understand that part of the reason for, besides what Ms. Herskowitz just talked about in terms of logistically with the, the contractor on the proof of vaccination, because we're sort of unsure of and have no control over international standards with respect to an availability of boosters. And we also have typically a certain number of test takers, respective, you know, respective test takers who are coming in internationally to take the test. That, I'm assuming that was the reason why it was not implemented in the first place. Can you give us a sense of, you know, typically how many people we're talking about, international test takers?
Unfortunately, I don't have the percentages or numbers handy. And I do suspect that that will be lower than, than normal because of travel restrictions that individuals might face or personal decisions not to travel because of the, the implications of COVID.
Okay, thanks. Trustees, what is your desire, any other thoughts, questions? I, you know, I, I don't think this is something we can put off. Clearly, the, the bar exam is a few short, couple of short weeks away, almost, few short weeks away. So I do think we do need to make a decision. I, I don't see any hands, so I would normally stay out of the debate. I mean, my, my, my recommendation is to go with staff's recommendation because built into there is some, some flexibility and some leeway for us to be responsive to public health orders as they emerge. There's always the possibility, Mr. Tony, that the, the governor might change everything on us anyway, or the CDC for that matter. I think that what staff has proposed gives us enough flexibility and, and is a reasonable approach to ensure the safety of, you know, as best we can, given the circumstances. And then certainly, I think it's, you know, I think it should be said to all of our test takers that they have a responsibility to themselves, right, to not show up and take a test if they're feeling sick, if they're exhibiting any of the symptoms. And I'm gonna assume that that's something we advise them of in writing and I'm making that, that plea here today. And we, you know, we will do the best we can with what we have, I think is what I'm asking.
This is Jose. I agree with everything you're saying and I'll make the motion for fifty dash four.
You have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
This is Brandon.
A second.
Thank you, trustee Stallings. Any further debater discussion? Mr. Sol.
I've, I've been trying to, in, in my mind, sort of reconcile, you know, what sort of the appropriate levels of safety are. And I, and I agree with a lot of what has been, been said in terms of, if, if left to us, you know, what I, what I'd like to sort of, I'll use the word impose. In the resolution, it says proof of vaccination or a negative test. Can that be, do we have the authority to do, to require both? You know, meaning that even if you're vaccinated, have you have a, have taken a test within seventy-two hours and, and still try to make allowances for those folks that might have sort of religious or medical exemptions?
I think I know what the answer is, but I will certainly leave it to people smarter than I to give us the correct answer.
Vanessa or G C, can you weigh in on that?
Yeah. That, that you raise a bunch of overlapping issues, Arnie. We can do all of that, but it, you, you, we can't just say, but that would, that would take into account those religious or medical exemptions because those are specific, under the law, those are specific applications that have to be made, that have to get reviewed by the, by the R. And that is the burden I was talking about earlier. And then I think the consequences of your suggestion would be that you'd have a certain set getting, I think, I hear you saying, a certain set who are vaccinated would also have to test while those who are unvaccinated wouldn't have to be vaccinated, but they'd have to test. So you'd have like a, kind of a double burden on one group. And actually, that favors the unvaccinated, right? Am I misunderstanding the suggestion?
I think, I think, Arnie's saying everybody would have to get tested regardless of whether or not they're vaccinated.
Right.
That's what I was, but, but you're right, Vanessa, it does set up that sort of dichotomy there, which, but given the number of, you know, folks that are asymptomatic, you know, et cetera, et cetera, that's what I was, and are, you know, and it's presenting itself even for those folks that are vaccinated. You know, I was just trying to figure out, is there a, a, a way to sort of ratchet up to another level of safety here without causing some sort of undue burden?
Yeah, that, that makes total sense. You wouldn't be asking people to put over the exemptions. You would just say, oh, it could, it would affect, you know, it would affect those. But, I mean, I can tell you, no one, no government order or no situation that I, we know of in public entities exist where both of those things are being required, I think. Nicole knows the nitty gritty better than I.
Not in sort of the, like the city and, and county context. Arnie, what you says, what you refer to kind of sounds similar to what many of the public schools have imposed upon like a return from winter break. And I think at a basic level, the answer to your question is, we do, we do have the authority to ask that people be vaccinated and produce a negative test. It would certainly offer more protection. And so the questions for consideration would be whether it is necessary over and above vaccination for those who are vaccinated. And also, we would have to consider the additional administrative burden that it would impose to track testing for all of our test takers, which would certainly be a, a higher volume than I think we had anticipated with CLEAR.
And the availability of either, if you're looking at the booster, because those are hard to get right now, or the availability of PCR, of tests too, between now and the time of the exam for everyone. So there's just practical, practical issues.
Practically speaking, the more notice we give applicants, the better. Because right now, as I understand it, sometimes people can't get appointments for testing for like a, a week or so. So we're really kind of getting to the point where if we were going to impose those additional requirements, we need to make that known to test takers as soon as possible.
Right.
Trustee Shelby, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you. I guess this is more of a, a procedural question. So what transpires if we find out come the end of February that people cannot gather for this test? For the bar examination, what is the, what is the plan B to address that? You know, if, if we find that by the third week of February, because the surge has continued, that there is not the opportunity for people to gather, what are we proposing in terms of addressing that?
Melanie, do you mean by government order or something? Yeah. Yeah. So, so I, I appreciate you asking that question and I meant to, to bring that up. So I apologize for not, for not mentioning that. The, the National Conference of Bar Examiners have identified a, an alternative date. Should public health orders prevent a jurisdiction from administering the exam in February? The requirement is public health orders that prohibit a jurisdiction from administering the exam. Certainly, and we faced this issue in when the exam was moved from July twenty twenty to October twenty twenty, right? We've had, have test takers who've been studying for quite some time. And, and delaying the test at the last minute would not be ideal for them if public health orders prevent us from gathering, obviously, that that, that is what we would need to do. Unfortunately, we are also at a point where the, 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 the dates that the National Conference of Bar Examiners have in mind, it would be too late, even if we got a public health order tomorrow to, there wouldn't be sufficient time to turn even a, a delayed exam into a remote exam. And so that would still be a, an in-person event.
Yeah, these are the times in which we live, folks. There's, there's just, there are no easy answers. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we have a roll call vote, please.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Snarrows.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Goodong.
Yes.
Leg. Shelby.
Aye.
So.
Reluctant, aye.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Abstain.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, staff. I know this is, this, the situation that changes frequently. And so appreciate your diligence on this. Okay, that takes us to the seven hundred series of items. First, on the agenda is seven oh one. Speaking of COVID, approval of the code, approval of COVID nineteen protocols for meetings of the State Bar Board of Trustees and our sub-entities. We have Steve Mazer, Chief Administrative Officer, and Nicole Pereda, Assistant G C from the Office of the G C, here to present and answer questions. Mr. Mazer or Ms. Pereda, please.
Yes, good afternoon, trustees. This item is requesting the board to adopt a COVID vaccination testing policy for its own in-person meetings and for meetings of state bar sub-entities. As we just discussed a short while ago, the bar does have for its own staff, a policy requiring mandatory vaccination for all, both employees and onsite contractors. That was implemented in September, part of a larger package of protocols that the bar has put in place over the last two years to create a safe and healthy work environment. We're now recommending a vaccination and testing policy for members of the board, members of sub-entities, and invited guests to all in-person meetings. Under the version of the policy that the staff is recommending, members and guests will be required to either be fully vaccinated or produce a COVID nineteen negative test within forty-eight hours of the start of an in-person meeting. Any non-vaccinated members or those who cannot produce a negative test would be able to participate by phone or Zoom at least through March thirty-first, while the governor's executive orders regarding meetings of state bodies remain in effect. Just touching on the issue of the more restrictive option of potentially making the board and sub-entity policy mirror the employee policy of mandatory vaccination. We did consider that in making the recommendations to you today. As you know, as Vanessa just described, we do have experience with doing the medical and religious exemption request. That is a very sensitive process and it is also a very time-consuming process. So that is the primary reason why we are not including that in the recommendation to you today. Additionally, while employees and onsite contractors are in the workplace regularly, board and sub-entity meetings are discreet events where a negative test prior to the start of the meeting, we believe, should offer significant protection. So for that reason, that is the version of the policy that we are putting in front of you today. There are some further details in the agenda item memo, but I'll be happy to stop here and open the floor for discussion. There are some further details in the agenda item uh memo, but I'll be happy to stop here and open the floor for discussion and questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mazur. Uh, trustee Dylan.
Uh, so thank you again, and thank you for this. Uh, so this is where I would probably ask that we that if there could be a guidance to our um staff and people in onsite, coming onsite to our regular, not prob- not the vendors, but the implo- the employees to um encourage them, or probably I should ask, what is our position about booster shots? Because of course, medical experts and uh and health officials are encouraging people to do boosters. So I think having that guidance in our policy, or if we uh uh it would not, that we would encourage our employees to have the booster shot. Uh, is it not, not mandatory, but at least something in our policy saying that.
Uh, we do have that already in our healthy office plan, which is the comprehensive plan that the bar has put forth with its various policies. We are strongly encouraging uh boosters, as we discussed just in the the previous item. Boosters, the whole issue of boosters are now, um, they're not formally part of the definition of fully vaccinated. They're in this category of now being called, you know, up to date. So for now, we have not changed our employee policy to require boosters. They are, however, as you suggest, uh, strongly encouraged. Whether they will, that will be added to the official policy, making them mandatory as well, will depend on further guidance and action by the C D C and other public health uh organizations.
And I think we will uh need to look fairly soon at San Francisco. I know I recently went to go see um a play at the A C T, and there was a, an indication that effective February fifth, you had to also show your booster, but not just your two shots because um because the city and county of San Francisco was requiring that. So w- we may soon have to do something for our employees in our San Francisco location at least.
And and this resolution, like the last one, uh mentions that, um, you know, staff will be able to, in consultation with the board chair, make changes because obviously things are evolving quickly. We can't keep coming back to the full board.
Trustee Sewell.
Yeah, I I think I read in um, you know, I think some of the minutes from the leadership meeting or or whatnot, that we are encouraging uh staff where uh appropriate um and to 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 work from home, correct? And so I I'm just sort of wondering how many, you know, what percentage of the staff is actually, you know, feels like they have to come into work to do in-person meetings and those sorts of things like that.
Uh, sure, I can, I can address that. Throughout the the pandemic, um, we've been ha- averaging around twenty percent of staff in office on any given day. We do have about fifty percent or so staff who are basically full-time telecommuted. Others are anywhere between one and five days in the office, just based on the nature of their duties or things uh going on. As a result of the Omicron surge, we did issue updated guidance to the office that we should pull back further from that and have people come to the office only when it is absolutely uh necessary for very specific uh purposes. So that's, that's the guidance that's out there right now to the Omicron surge.
But, Arnie, we do have some state bar subentities that are really clamoring to meet in person, um, namely the Jenny Commission. There were in-person meetings scheduled for January and February that we did uh indicate needed to go back remote. So we are going to have to address that issue um from a policy perspective, even irrespective of um coronavirus. There are some, you know, unintended or, you know, benefits of this experience where we know we can do many things remotely. And for many, that does increase access. It certainly reduces costs. And so as we think about what coming back looks like, we need to factor in, um, you know, we don't just necessarily need to return to all meetings. There are going to be in-person of all state bar subentities. But we do have some that have been really wanting to uh return to in-person meeting. And and that in part has motivated um this particular agenda item, and it need to set some guidance uh for when that does in fact begin to occur.
Trustee Tony.
Thank you, um, Chair Duran. The um, I really like the policy that applies to uh state bar staff. Um, I I I think it's an appropriate a policy that both is mandatory vaccination that, um, you know, permits the legally required exemptions for medical and deeply held religious beliefs. And the policy is one that mirrors uh my own organization's policies at turn and also mirrors um the policies that um another board I um had served on until December. The A C L U Northern California also adopted uh the, you know, these uh employee uh protections, uh COVID protections. I feel very strongly that the board, subentities, anybody that comes to board meetings, including members of the public, have to be, uh, should be required to have the same requirements as our staff. Um, I see absolutely no reason to have a double standard here. I think we should be consistent with um, um, you know, with uh the board and and, you know, with, you know, the staff when we gather. It will give all of us peace of mind um as members, and I'm very unhappy with this last sentence about staff anticipates a future policy recommendation that will require members of public to wear masks and adhere to other standard protocols, but not be subject to a vaccination or testing requirement, unlike they can up, they can participate remotely. Okay, we should continue, even when we come back to person, to um maximize public participation by retaining an option for remote participation. That way, people who choose, members of the public who choose not to be vaccinated, still have access. We haven't cut them off, but it simply means that, no, you can't come in person. Coming in person is a privilege, okay? And it's a privilege that we all earn by being considerate of others. And you know, because when 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 re- remember, when we're vaccinated, it's, yes, we're protecting ourselves, but even more importantly, we're protecting everybody we come in contact with. Okay, and that's even more important. So I very strongly would like to see this uh motion modified to um whatever language, but the meaning being that the uh, you know, the board, subentities, invited guests, public all have to fall under the same policy that applies to the staff.
Thank you. Could you just address the public issue? Because we 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 may not have the authority to do that on our own based on um public meeting rules. Could you just touch on that?
Yes, I I can, and um I I hear what you're saying, and I think the principles and the science certainly support it. But unfortunately, sometimes public orders and the law take a little while to catch up to the science and the facts on the ground. And currently, um, the Bagley Keen Act, uh, it's, oh, it, there has been an, exactly, as everyone knows, there's been an executive order that has allowed remote meetings through the end of March, and that was recently uh extended in light of the Omicron uh variant. But short of some additional legislation from the governor or the legislature, the state bar is not going to be able to impose um additional or, quite frankly, very many restrictions at all on um members of the public. I do think it's very likely, as things evolve, that we will have cover um and direction uh in the form of a a law or an executive order, because it it simply doesn't make sense that members of the public can come to board meetings and be unvaccinated and uh create that kind of uh risk. But currently, under the Bagley Keen statute, we can't put that um requirement out at the present time. What we can do is continue to monitor and maybe come back to the board, or um with the elastic clause here, create a more restrictive uh requirement for the public when the the law allows us to do so.
So Mark, I just to sort of bottom line to the consequences of your proposal. We can require vaccine of everyone except perhaps in two categories, the one that Nicole just mentioned in terms of the public, and we'd have to have an alternative uh testing, masking, you know, distancing protocol. The other is the exempts. Those who cannot medically or religiously get the vaccine, we would still have, we could still have in-person meetings when we have to have them, in which not everyone would be vaccinated. That would just be the two kind of air, uh, exempt, you know? And I'm not sure, I'd have to look into whether we could require the exempts to participate um remotely, the non-public exempts, right? Like our volunteers or the board members or subentities. I'm not sure we can require them to only participate remotely. We'd have to look into that part.
I I I will say that I I have a different interpretation of Bagley Keen when it comes to uh the public participation. Um, I think it's fully possible to permit uh participation um online. There has to be public participation, obviously, under Bagley Keen, but I I that that I would want to take it. I um, I I I I do agree um with our uh general counsel that we um obviously need to keep the exemptions for medical and deeply held religious beliefs so that um uh people who want to participate in person, who um were not vaccinated, would be re- required to um have that reviewed, okay? And so that obviously would be part of the process. But I do think that um at the, at the very least, um, and I'd be willing to put the public issue for next, for the next meeting, uh for discussion at the next meeting. But on the question of the Board of Trustees, members of the subentities and invited guests to the meetings that for 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 those people, we'll put public um aside now, but but for now, before us, that it, that it be consistent with the staff uh requirements and that we not adopt a double standard.
Did you, are you making a motion, Mark?
Yeah, I was, if that's a motion, yeah, put it on the table and we'll, we'll see if it gets a second.
Yeah, I I I I move that um the recommendations under, under the resolved that um that, you know, after they all invited, um, to provide proof of full COVID nineteen vaccination or submit to the state bar, I don't care who it's to, um, uh, a request, uh, you know, to, to, basically to have an approved medical or religious exemption reviewed and granted by the state bar.
I I I can uh help you.
Thank you.
You you would just, you would either just put a period after vacation and get rid of a vaccination, get rid of the rest, or you would say, provide proof of full COVID nineteen vaccination, you know, subject to, we could just mirror the employee one.
Yeah.
Subject to um let me find what.
Not a full of religious, however you want to put it, yeah. I I I I don't have.
I have the language here somewhere.
Thank you.
We will uh let it go up as a substitute, but well, it'll be an original motion. It's just a different motion than staff had prepared. Um, and then folks can take a look at it. Um, we'll see, if it gets a second, then we can discuss it.
I think it would just say uh, subject to allowable medical and religious exemptions under the law.
Perfect.
Or medical and religious exemptions allowed under the law or something.
Mm-hmm.
And take out two allowable then. Period. And then you would take the rest of that sentence out, as well as the two allowable.
Take out allowable.
Yeah, take out.
But you'd have to put in two.
Subject to, yeah.
And then if you could pu- push, instead of deleting, um, Louisa, just maybe uh move that text down that we are talking about getting rid of, starting where you are now, just in case um people want to see it again. You haven't deleted it.
So the only thing about having it just read like that is um it's really subject to other laws like Bagley Keen. We've talked of this two issues, right? There's exemptions and there's the Bagley Keen.
We aren't addressing the public issue, I think, if that's what you mean, Vanessa.
I thought in this resolution?
Not in this.
Mark is suggesting holding off on that. What I was going to say is if we do that, then as as I think is indicated in the memo, um, I've given a directive for no in-person meetings for January and February. I would ask that we extend that to March so that we could come back to the board in March with a policy specific to public participation. And we could fully bet, you know, some of the issues Mark has raised, it make sure that we're all sort of on the same page about what the law is.
Right, you're you're right that it, that the resolution does not mention the public. Invited guests are more experts that we bring in or something like that. They're not the public. So then this works. And and what Leah wants to do works, and it may just be a matter of our yeah, telling you what what Bagley Keen requires. But so you would take, so under this, you would take out the part of in the alternative until the end of that sentence, and then leave the rest in, right?
Yeah, I was just asking that you just don't delete it, you know? If you can get it off the screen, Louisa, without deleting it, that whole paragraph that you're in right now, in case people want to have it come back, and then if you can just push enter to get it off of the screen. And then, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's our resolution.
There is a proposed motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, can you done it?
Discussion on this motion?
So what happens to the original uh recommendation? Is this, is this now the new one, the only one that we're voting on?
That's correct. There there wasn't, there wasn't a motion of the original recommendation, so this is the only motion on the table.
And I just want to mention that this doesn't preclude participation if if we can do it, you know, because we'll do it remote, if we can do it remotely, which we have done, and even before COVID, of individuals of subentities or something.
That's right. This is for in-person attendance.
Right.
Whenever we get them.
In-person attendance at what?
Uh, meetings of the Board of Trustees uh and subentities. Any questions? Any discussion? I I can't see folks, if your hands are raised, so please feel free to just uh verbally chime in. Okay, seeing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bratton?
No.
Chen? I'm sorry, didn't hear that. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you. Sis Narrows?
Aye.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Gunong?
Yes.
Delag? Shelby?
Aye.
Soul?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, trustees. That was a um, a very good discussion. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is seven oh two. Request for the adoption of interim rules of procedure requiring remote court proceedings due to Omicron variant. Ms. Dory, have you joined us yet? There you are. Hi, Erica. Good morning. You're on mute.
Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
I guess it's good afternoon. That will be brief. Um, okay, perfect. So uh, this item requests um an adoption of an additional interim rule, a rule five point one nine um to authorize the state bar court to do um something similar to what uh this group has been. to do something similar to what this group has been discussing earlier today. So it's to authorize the State Bar Court to have discretion to order court proceedings to be conducted remotely. And it would be temporary through April 1st, 2022, in light of the Omicron variant. If you'll recall, back in November, this, uh, the trustees authorized three other interim rules, rules 5.17, 5.18, and 5.14. However, those rules did not allow the court to determine whether or not to conduct a proceeding remotely or in person. It was based on party preference. And the court feels that during this time with the Omicron variant, it should have the ability to order proceedings to be conducted remotely to protect court participants, State Bar staff, as well as the judges. I'm happy to address any questions.
Any questions from Ms. Dory? Any commentary on the proposed, Mr. Stallings?
This is Brandon Hall, I'll move the motion.
This is already our second. Thank you. We have a first and a second may have a roll call vote.
Broden?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Sisneros?
Hi.
Sorry. Delacruz?
Yeah.
Dylan?
Yes.
Gunong?
Yes.
Selag? Shelby?
Hi.
Soul?
Hi.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony? Tony? I don't think I see trustee Tony.
Possibly he dropped off. We probably have enough votes to record an action.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Takes us to 703, which if I'm not mistaken, is the beginning of our strategic planning session. I am looking at the clock. It is 12:28. We are still a little bit behind. Am I right? Hold on a minute, I apologize.
You are, we have closed session items that I think we wanted to get to today, at least some of them.
Okay.
So we, we are behind, but I've been in communication with our strategic planning consultant. I think we're okay time-wise. Just defer to you if you'd like to take a lunch break now and then go into closed session, have a working lunch. You know, one of the closed session items we are going to, you know, is planned for discussion tomorrow, but the remaining, it would be good to get through today.
Okay. And I'm looking at the closed session agenda. It looks like we've got 5,001.
7,001.
Well, there's also, uh, there's also a contract. 100%, yeah.
All right, sorry.
Um, that's okay. And then the four items, uh, the second of which will be for tomorrow morning. How long do we think we'll need for the closed session for the other three items?
The fourth of which will be for tomorrow morning.
Oh, the fourth, thank you, sorry about that.
Yeah, then Nasa, do you have a time estimate? Most of those are, are, I think they're all your items.
Are we in open session right now?
We are.
Yes, we are.
We're just trying to figure out whether we take a closed session before lunch or come back and do a closed session and then start the strategic planning or do a working lunch.
I think you should do the closed session after lunch.
Okay. Trustees, does you want, do you want to have a 20 or 30-minute lunch on your own? Or would you like to do a working lunch and come back here and work on the closed session items? Maybe during, during, while we're eating? Anybody have a strong preference, one way or the other? If not, I'm going to suggest that we just go ahead and take, um, take a half hour for lunch on our own, meet back here at 1 o'clock to go into closed session. Can we, Vanessa, can we announce the closed session now so that we can reconvene in a closed session at 1 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Great. I will go ahead and do that then. Everybody clear on what we're doing? Yes, I see nodding heads.
Coming back directly in closed session, right?
We'll come back directly in closed session to discuss the items that are listed in our closed session agenda. They are as follows. Uh, under a consent calendar, approval of a contract relating to the preparation, grading, or administration of the California Bar Exam for first-year law students exam uh, under Business and Professions Code 6026.7 Sub C. Discussion regarding potential litigation concerning the Bar Exam for July 2021. Government Code 11126 Sub E Sub 1. Valuation of the General Counsel pursuant to Government Code 1126 Sub A. And a discussion regarding the auditive closed Office of Chief Trial Counsel files under the authority of Government Code Section 11126 Sub A 1 and Sub C 2. Okay, with that, we will adjourn and reconvene in closed session with the link. Are we getting a new link, folks? Or is it?
Yes, I will be sending out the link shortly.
Okay, great. Get some food and we'll see you back in here in 29 minutes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we're, we are now recording. It was on mute.
Okay, great, thank you. Do we need a roll call to come back into open session?
No.
Okay. Uh, we are back in open session. Again, thank you to everyone for your patience. I know we're running a little bit behind today. We had a closed session just now with lunch break before that. For the record, I'll note that there are no reportable actions from the closed session. So we'll resume our open session calendar with item 7,003. 703. I'm sorry. I will try and be, yes, it is 703. This is the strategic planning session, uh, what we have all been waiting for. I see Cassandra Pye is with us on the meeting and perhaps some of her colleagues. Leah, do you want to introduce this item? I'm, I'm not sure if it goes up first.
Um, I'm happy to get us kicked off. And I think Cassandra is actually going to formally and officially kick us off. I, I know I will be speaking a little bit later today. Just welcome everybody to the strategic planning session portion of our meeting. I'm really looking forward to the next day and a half with all of you. We've been working hard behind the scenes at, at planning this and really hopeful that we are going to have a fruitful conversation that lays the groundwork for the next five years at the State Bar. Looking forward to sharing with you what we've accomplished over this past five years, what we can leverage from as we look ahead. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cassandra, because I think we have a few things planned before my look back segment of the agenda.
We do. Thank you, Leah, and it's nice to see everyone in one place. And want to start by thanking the working group, Mr. Duran, Mr. Tony, Mr. Stallings, and of course, the brilliant staff for getting us to this place. We did a lot of prep ahead of this. We've gotten some really great guidance. And my biggest regret is that we're not meeting in person. That goes without saying. And I know that's a big regret for, for many of you. But we're going to try to do a couple of things, hopefully, that just keep this a little bit lively. One of the last things I think we want to do is, I'll, I'll speak for myself, is to hear me drone on for the next day and a half. And so we're definitely going to find a way to include and involve everybody in the discussion. The, the other thing I just wanted to do, Mr. Duran, I see you, is just see if there's anything you want to say to open before we go.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Cassandra. I'll be very brief. You know, I know when we last met in November, the hopes were high for us to be all in one place. But I'm, you know, I'm, I'm thankful for the efforts that Cassandra and her team have put on, as well as the folks that Cassandra mentioned with the planning. There'll be some, you know, there'll be some good opportunities, I think, for us to, to communicate. Thank you to all of you for having done your homework. And there'll be, there'll be a prize later for some of that. And, and, and just for the thought and, and you know, the effort that you put in and then you're, I'm hoping you're going to put in over the next day and a half. Because this is really is an important exercise that we're about to go through. Not only is it just best practices, it's required of us by the state and our own rules. And in each of you brings something unique to the table, tremendous strengths and talents and perspectives. And so I look forward to, to how we can harness all of that together to, to bring the organization through to the next phase. Because it certainly has been quite a, quite a challenging time we're just coming out of and going through in a lot of ways. So thank you all for, for being here, truly.
Thank you so much. And the challenge continues, apparently. So here we go. So I want to start by just level setting and make sure we're all clear about what will and won't happen in these next couple of days. The first thing is I want to be sure that you all know we're not going to walk away from this process tomorrow afternoon having a document that's got a bow and, and some tape on it. This is meant to really be a convening that allows us to re- review the feedback we heard and to start to discuss potential priorities and to give Leah and the team some guidance as we start to pull a document together. Leah is expecting, or at least hopes, that we have a document to share with the trustees at its board meeting in March, which means that after today and tomorrow, we will still probably need one or two more convenings with the working group to give us guidance there. But I just want to be sure everybody understands that we're not going to walk away from this with a, uh, with a, with a document in our pockets.
And Nasa, could you mute yourself or Louisa, can you mute Vanessa? Thanks.
Sorry.
So I want to do two things. I see Travis, I want to introduce Travis Taylor, who's a senior VP at LPA. He will be on to help us off and on and just in case you've got questions or Carbone Gino is also on, but I don't see her, so.
We're having a little trouble promoting Haley out of the attendee pool. Though I'm in touch with her, but you know, we're looking to try to get her into the panelist group.
I think I see her. So can we do this while we wait for Haley to pop on? Can we just go around the Zoom room, sorry? And just let me get some notes from everybody, just on general expectations. And when I say general expectations, how would you define success based on my level set? You know, not, not a, a package in a bow, but what are your expectations for these next several hours? And I'm just going to go in the order that I see you. Mr. Sisneros? Expectations?
Oh, thank you, thank you, Cassandra. I'm, I'm looking forward to a thoughtful and engaged conversation and a chance for everyone to be heard and an opportunity to synthesize. You know, we always have a lot going on in our meetings and in our organization. And I think we want to boil down to an essence that we can put down on paper and, um, and to some, to a large degree, follow for years to come. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Ms. Chen, expectations?
I'm similar. I, I would like to, us to be engaged in high-level discussions about strategy. And sometimes in the past, our strategic, strategic planning sessions have gone down into the weeds of operations. And I think the time is right to have higher-level strategy discussion.
Glad you said that. And it's probably something I should have said up top. I am probably going to, for those who do like to get in the weeds, I'm going to be your worst enemy because I am going to try really hard to keep us at the high level. We've got plenty of time to get in the weeds. So thank you for that comment. Mr. Stallings? How are you?
I will, good to see you again.
Same here.
So I think as I talked about in some of our planning sessions, what's most important to me is just really gelling together as a group. Not necessarily that we come out all thinking the same thing, but that, you know, I think like one of the, the previous trustees said, that we all hear each other and that that communication can be clear, that we can have high-level discussions, mindful of in-the-weed implications, but also, you know, put that in the context of strategy and how each board member can use our unique experiences and, and gifts to accomplish what's best for the State Bar of California and what's best for the California people and really keep that in mind throughout all of our discussions.
Thank you for that. I am going to also use your comments for, to just lead to a quick commercial break. I got the materials that we needed for your session that's coming up in a couple of minutes, Mr. Stallings. But I did not get fun facts from everybody. And so if you didn't send me a fact about you that maybe most of the folks on the line don't know, if you would email that to me while we're in the course of the conversation, I want to have that ready for this evening. But I've gotten some really great feedback and I appreciate everybody participating, 100% participation there. So thank you. Let me go to Mr. Broden. Expectations, sir?
Funny, when you first said that, I flashed back on the, the last five-year strategic plan that we were engaging. You've heard me talk a little bit about it. The word that came to my mind was survive. Because there was a lot of challenges for us back then. I mean, as Leah pointed out and others, we really was the beginning of the changing of the State Bar. And so there were a lot of, there was a lot of contention. And there was a lot of decisions that were made as to where this organization was going to go. So I think just looking at, in, in an overall picture of sort of policy statements are fundamentals, things that the organization wants to stick with for the next five years that can lead and direct Leah in the future. That's.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And survive.
And survive. That goes for all of us at this point. Uh, Mr. Soul? Hello?
How are you?
Good, thank you.
This is the first time I have gone through this process. And so I'm very much looking forward to, to learning. I believe that there are a number of members that have, have gone through this before. And I'm looking, I'm looking forward to hearing from them, hearing a little bit more of, of the history of, of how we've gotten to, to certain points. And I just hope we make it through everything that we need to make it through. Because there's, there's an awful lot that, that we have that's going on. And I, I think for me, at the end of all this, I want to be able to articulate, you know, where we've been, uh, where we are right now and probably most importantly, you know, where we're, where we're headed. And, and do that in a, in a very sort of, uh, uh, simple, but a very credible way.
I appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
I think I'm looking to sort of deepen and solidify my own uh, uh, understanding of the ways in which our organization can protect the public. I'm looking to solidify the commitment that we have to each other as fellow trustees and to our staff and, you know, sort of giving them what they need from us to get the job done. And I'm looking for ways to sort of bring to bear the, the various strengths that we each have to make sure our organization is adaptable and resilient for what's coming next.
Thank you. Great. Leah, I'm going to skip you and come to you last, if you don't mind.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, this is the one thing I didn't practice, so I'm not even going to try it. Sean, tell me how to say your last name, please.
I knew it was going to be me. Everyone struggles with my name. It's Selag.
Selag? Okay, Mr. Selag. Expectations, I like it.
Well, first of all, welcome to our meeting and good to see you again. You know, I don't have anything original to say. I think this is a good time to take a step back and, and think about what we've done in recent years and, and what we want to do at a high level of policy goals for the next five years. And so it's a really important exercise for us and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Selag. I'll never mess it up again. And Mr. Tony, how are you, sir?
I'm good, thank you, Cassandra. I think aspirations, priorities, strategy. That's what I would, would be looking for.
And you've done this work before, for a living?
Yeah, a little bit here and there. And, and I've gone through it with a lot of organizations I've been part of, so.
And so where do you come down on the in-the-weeds versus high-level question? I have to ask you that.
High level, high level. It's really important to think about vision, to, 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 to really think about, you know, what's, how do we want the world to look like? What's our role? What's the piece that we're going to? What's our role? What's the piece that we're going to take? I identify, that's the priorities, and then, uh, what's, you know, the, you know, the key strategy point, something that we can measure ourselves against.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Very helpful. And Ms. Shelby, hello?
Hello, how are you? I think everyone said it. I don't, I don't think there's anything left. Um, consensus on board priorities and charting the course for the future within the context of the mission in meaningful and thoughtful conversations.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, may I add this? I, I did write this down. Clarity, um, clarity around vantage points, that our vantage points vary based on our experience. And so there are some of us who sit here as attorneys, there are some of us who sit here as public members, and the recognition that, um, our vantage point shapes our viewpoint. And so how do we bring that together under consensus to chart the course for the organization?
Okay. Do you feel like the board has been operating through that lens so far? Are you, are you applying that?
I think at times, I think at times when it serves us to operate in that lens, we do. And then I think at times when it serves us to fall on the, a, a, and maybe from a, a vantage point standpoint, because I don't practice law and I'm not an attorney, but I think at times when, um, the conversation centers around, well, because of this, we can't do this, or we shouldn't do this, but I think at times when we can, we certainly try. But I think at other times, um, it's not the case. So I would love for us to all look at it through the prism of each other's experience, right? So when I make a decision, I'm looking at it through the prism of Sean's experience and the work that he does as a litigator. And, and Jose is looking at it through my experience as a public affairs professional, and Ruben is looking at it through Mark's experience as a nonprofit leader, and, 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 um, Brandon is looking at it through, you know, uh, Sonia's experience as a banking professional, finance professional. And so I think that becomes important, um, as we begin to chart the course for the organization moving forward.
Okay. And that goes to diversity of thought, doesn't it? Which is a diversity of perspective. Okay. Very well said. Ms. Dylan, how are you?
Oops. Thank you, and so glad to, um, have you, uh, have you lead us through this process. Again, uh, everyone has said, you know, all the things that we could, would be expecting, and I, I, I feel the same way. Uh, I want to be probably more clear in our roles and how, what we could bring to the table more and for us to, for me to realize what it is that I can bring more, what the value I can bring to the table. Um, be more proactive, probably, because I think most of the things that we're doing, we're trying to, um, try, trying to, to do things that are, that have been in their problems, that have been ongoing, and to be able to set, set something that we can, you know, since one problem can be really, we can have resolutions to problems e- that, that's more sustainable, that doesn't have to be, you know, repeating. Um, so I, I think, uh, I am just, you know, echoing everyone's expectations and, and just for me to be, have a more defined role for myself, be more clear as far as what I can bring to the table.
Okay, thank you. And then last, but definitely not least, Ms. Wilson, what do you want to get out of this? Other than the fact that the big box you got to check?
Yeah. No, I, I want to, um, get out of it, what, what I've heard from, from the board, but the, the point I would add is, um, I would call it something related to our resiliency. So I think it's, um, really important that we identify where we want to be in five years. But I want to understand the resiliency of the board and of our organization in charting that course and in staying the course, even when faced with a tremendous amount of resistance. And, uh, many of you know, we're experiencing some resistance right now, that this is not new. And so i- it will be really helpful for me to understand, you know, what is that? What is the level of resiliency that we have and that we want to have? Um, so that, that would be my add.
It's a good word. Okay. So, one of my favorite things to do is to listen, and then I'll give you a little bit of what I heard. Um, I heard that we want to have a, a conversation where everyone's heard. Um, high-level strategic discussion, staying away from the weeds, uh, gelling together as a group and leveraging unique experiences. Um, I heard the word survival, but also, um, leadership. Um, we've got a couple of first timers, and so one of you said you'd like to learn from this. Um, and then get through it, um, because we've got a lot to get through, uh, where we've been, where we are, where we're headed. Uh, deepen and solidify ways that the state bar can protect the public. Um, work together as trustees, support the staff, and bring to bear, um, the strengths. Several of you have talked about the diverse set of strengths around this room, Zoom room. Um, step back and think about public policy goal, not public, sorry, policy goals at a high level. Um, and then I heard three words, aspirations, priorities, strategies at a high level. What do we want the world to look like? I think that was very well put. Um, priorities and consensus, and then some clarity around, um, the different vantage points that people are, um, us viewing this work through, the lenses that we're each viewing this work through, I think is a really good point. Um, what can I bring? Uh, be more proactive about a defined role for myself. And then we closed out with, um, Ms. Wilson talking about resiliency, uh, because there's a lot that we have to do. Uh, but we also need to be sure we're capable of staying the course and, um, and remaining resilient. So, good feedback. I appreciate that. Any other comments or expectations? Anything I missed? Anybody want to add anything?
Like to have a little fun?
Well, that's a good idea. I'm going to put that at the top of the list. We'll have a little bit of fun. We will. So, um, with that, let me do this. Um, either Travis or Haley, can we pull the agenda up pretty quickly and just share that? And if not, I'll keep going and we can come back to it. All right, so, let's talk quickly about day one. Just want you all to see what we're, we've got in store for us, and to Mr. Soul's point, we've got a lot to get done, a lot to cover. Let's scroll down. And so, we're about to go into team-building exercise. Um, we're going to take a quick review and talk a little bit about the, um, the mission and charges, uh, uh, video presentation that, um, the staff shared with us, and I think many of us took a look at. Uh, I am going to be very mindful about the fact that you are sitting, and so we're going to do a couple of stretch breaks and be really intentional about that, give you a chance to also check email and have an environmental break. Leah's going to walk through, um, a review. Uh, this goes to something someone said earlier. Let's take a quick look back, uh, before we look forward. And then, uh, Mr. Duran will, will talk a little bit about just generally that vision forward. We'll take another break. And then I want to, I'm going to squeeze the agenda a little bit because of, um, because of our timing today, but one of the things I do want to do before we, um, before we break at five is talk about what the potential outcomes might look like. And, and Travis is going to take us through a quick look of just some possible scenarios and formats around what this finished product might look like. We'll take a 30-minute break, and then hopefully everybody who's on the line right now will be able to join us for the social hour. We, as, um, Mr. Chairman said, we want to have a little bit of fun, and as many of you said, uh, in the interviews and, and several have said all along in this process, to the extent that we can get to know each other and, and, and I can facilitate, um, some conversations and some activities to help us get to know each other a little bit better. Just feels like, even though remote, um, we want to try to be intentional about that. So that's what, um, that's what today looks like. And then let's quickly go to tomorrow. We'll bump a few things into the Friday agenda from today, but I still think we'll be okay. I think most of you know, we've got a closed session from nine to 11. We'll take a break and then we open back up. This is where, oh. Okay, this is where we will, um, start to do two things. One, you're going to hear a lot today, and you're going to hear a little bit more tomorrow. Want to give you a chance to react and respond to what you've heard. Um, for you to talk to us a little bit about what you're, you know, sort of how you're thinking about priorities around goals for the next five years should look. We'll talk a teeny bit about, um, resource. And then we're going to bump the conversation around key audiences and stakeholders, uh, to tomorrow, because I don't think we'll have time to cover today, and that's fine. I think we'll be fine. So that's the agenda. Leave it up for a couple of seconds. And then let's pull it down and just, is there anything on here that gives you heartburn? Let's pull it down. And, um, just quick, anybody just raise hands if you've any concerns? Good. Okay, Mr. Tony's smiling. So that's going to be my guide. He's my guidepost. Um, so.
Luisa, I'm sorry. Do you see Juan is in the attendees? Can you bring him over? Sorry.
No problem. Thank you. I'll wait for him to come in. There we go. Welcome. How are you?
Good, good. Apologies.
We, it's okay. Um, everybody's got things to do. We did a quick exercise before you came on where we just teed up our expectations. I won't bore you with that, but I just want to be sure I hear from you as well. Anything in particular you want to be sure that we get out of this conversation these next couple of days? So I want to get your feedback as well.
Um, I think for me, it's just, uh, there are several items that we've discussed in the last few years, and i- it's just developing a robust strategy about certain items.
Okay.
It might not happen this, these two days, but at least starting to have that conversation.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for joining us. So, some quick round rules from me. Again, I wish we were in person. We're not. Most of us are tired of Zoom. Can't be helped. Um, one of the things that I know from doing this work with a lot of groups, including, um, my own staff, is, um, oftentimes people will use Zoom and believe that they are effectively, um, able to multitask, that they are listening to the meeting and, and still can answer email and read documents that come in and text, but you can't. Um, multitasking is not, it's not a real thing. Let's just, let's be honest. So, two things. I'm going to ask that while you're in the room, to the extent that you can, keep your cameras on. Gives me a chance just to kind of get a little bit of a sense of, um, your faces. I do look for smiles. I do look for nods. I do need that to kind of help me, um, figure out kind of where we are in the conversation. So if you are, if you've got to step away, it goes without saying, to, turn your camera off and flip it back on, but try to keep your camera on as much as possible. I think you probably are all accustomed to using the raise hand function. Um, please continue to do that if you've got a comment. And, um, if I, I am someone said, I want to hear from, they want to hear from everyone, so do I. Um, the one thing I want to try to do in just about every issue we discuss is make my way around the Zoom room and hear from everyone. If for some reason you're not prepared, or if you're, um, if you are, um, sort of zoomed out, just politely pass and I'll move on to the next trustee. But I do want to try to do that. So, any other ground rules that anybody has that, that they've used from other conversations like this? Mr. Chairman, does this work for you? All right, I got a thumbs up. Then with that, go ahead, please. Oh, you took your, took your mic off.
I wouldn't have to use thumbs up anymore.
Okay, no problem. Um, so with that, I'm going to turn it over, um, for our first team-building exercise to the illustrious Mr. Stallings, and I think you're going to get a little help from, um, from our team here.
Oh, good. All right. Do you have the photos on a preset? Okay. So just as a way of introduction, um, you know, we, we've had, I think, one in-person meetings since, uh, the pandemic hit, and, uh, that one meeting was great. We had, I think, a majority of the board, uh, was able to make it. Um, and, you know, we were able to go out to eat, uh, and really just kind of get to know each other in person and get to know the, the individual behind the Zoom, uh, the Zoom pixels. And so, you know, just thinking back to that time, you know, I, I'm sure a lot of us pulled out our cell phones. I know, me being a relatively new father, I always have photos kind of on a, on instant recall. I got my favorites folder in my, uh, my iPhone, just, you know, with a bunch of different photos that mean something to me. And, um, I'm really, you know, quick to share, quick to share them, because I think the photos, uh, that we share with other people kind of give, give an insight into who we are, what we value in life, and really provide this, uh, common, uh, point of interest and something that we, as humans, can say, hey, you know what? I may not agree with this person, but he's, he or she is a real individual, and I know that because, because X, Y, and Z. And I can identify with that aspect of them. So, this, uh, um, this portion of the planning session is going to involve photos that everybody sent, uh, to Cassandra and her team. And so, uh, trustees, if you can give, uh, just a one-minute, uh, introduction to the photo, why, why it means something to you and, uh, just really how it might direct your work here at the State Bar. So, Cassandra, do you want me to lead out? I, I'm not sure what the order is. Oh, all right. Looks like we'll go with, uh, Eileen first.
All right. So, I apologize for the poor quality of this photo. This is a photo of a photo that I rescued from my flooded basement a number of years ago. Um, the sump pump broke in my, at my house, and it flooded the basement. So, when I graduated from law school, I had a one-year-old, that's Claire, and Katie was five. And so I really cherish this photo. Um, they are both huge adults now. Claire, like, towers over me. She's like 5'8". Um, and I'm very short. So, for those of you who only know my height on Zoom, I am quite a short person, and now Claire, the little baby, is huge. Um, but it really reminds me of, uh, what a challenging time it was to get to law school and also just how proud I am that I was able to do it, and also one of the reasons why I am committed to, um, making our profession diverse and inclusive.
Excellent. All right, thanks, Eileen. All right, the illustrious Mark Broughton, a former, or a fellow Cal County member of the, uh, Board of Trustees.
Ah, well, I'm not so sure what this, uh, photo represents in terms of me becoming a lawyer, but if you see, um, the picture on the, as we look at it top-left, which is an old man who's standing there, uh, signing a hat, actually. And there's a little blond kid in the middle of the photograph and looking down at a little boy holding up a, a ball. This guy, this poor old fellow standing here is Casey Stingle. And if any of you know anything about baseball, you'll know Casey Stingle was the manager of the New York Yankees during their heyday in the 50s and the 60s. He managed them to, I think, seven World Series. He's a, um, he's in the Hall of Fame, and he came down to our Little League, um, one day, and he met with all the kids and signed autographs and so forth. This little kid right here, who's about nine or 10, is me, and he is signing my hat. And right here, you can see the very baseball hat that I had, that Casey Stingle signed. And, um, what's interesting about that is that this photograph, you can't quite see it here, but it was in the center. I, I was on this, I was a centerfold of the Saturday Evening Post, which is no longer, um, in, in press. It's, it's the actual magazine, like Life Magazine and all of that, which, um, who was it that did all the, uh, the pictures on the front? Very famous.
Norman Rockwell.
That's it. Norman Rockwell did all of those. So I was a centerfold in about 1960, 61. That year, um, I made the All-Star team on that team. And this is the starting third baseman. We went all the way to the state championships. And, uh, it was towards the last inning, and I had been one of the leading hitters in the league that year, and I was due next, and there was a guy in second base. We were down by a run, and I was getting ready to, to have my at-bat, and the manager, whose son somehow made the team, he pulled me from the game and put his son in, who promptly struck out, and we lost the game. And I've never forgotten that. I've just, to this day, I am annoyed that I never got put up, and he put the, you know, his son in there, and we lost that, that game in the championship. So, there, the footnote to this is that I, this photograph was with my father's possessions. with my father's possessions. It was in a frame. When my father passed away, I went to his apartment, went through his things and there was this, this photograph that he kept all these years up on the wall of his apartment. Why that has anything to do with becoming a lawyer? I don't know.
Mark, I think it speaks to your uh, sense of justice and why you uh, chose to insert yourself into the criminal justice system. So uh, we're glad that you're here though, on the Board of Trustees. And that no one's gonna make a last second call to pull you.
And my sister-in-law, by the way, made that. And if I get rid of this thing here, uh, let's see. Virtual background none. Over my shoulder on the wall is the picture in my hat that she made this diorama, whatever is boring. It's right in my office.
I encourage everybody to go to Fresno to visit Mark's office. It's a, it's a beautiful, beautiful setting. All right. Thanks, Mark. That's a great story. All right. And going on to the other Mark, Mark Tony.
This is a picture of my great-grandfather, uh, Charles Harvet Tony, known as C.H. Tony. He um, came to, moved to Vallejo in nineteen oh seven from uh, Texas. He had gone to Prairie View A&amp;M. And when he arrived, he, he, he um, had a job at Mare Island, Naval Shipyard. But when he showed up to work, they wouldn't give him the job because they didn't know he was black. So he wrote a letter to the Secretary of the Navy and a few months later got a letter back saying they had to hire him because he passed a civil service test. So um, he started the Tony family in Vallejo. He is extremely well-known. He um, was an adherent of Booker T. Washington and he founded the Vallejo Industrial and Normal Institute. You see him in his office uh, as the superintendent. Sometime in the nineteen twenties, you see he has a telephone on his desk, which I think was pretty uncommon at that time. Um, but he was also a minister and founded a church that actually still exists today. And they still remember him. Um, in Vallejo, he also was a uh, uh, adherent of uh, Luther Burbank and he um, was a well-known farmer um, in town, had a large family. And so all the Tonys in Vallejo are, are my kin. And um, he's somebody that I am generally compared to, at least from the older people in the family. So uh, he's someone I, 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 I look up to. Um, I, you know, never met him in person, but he's quite a legend in our family.
That is quite the legacy. Thanks, Mark. Definitely looks like he's ready for a Zoom call. All right, uh, Jose.
Thanks. Uh, hello, everyone. Um, this is uh, I have to chuckle when I see this photo. Um, uh, as people know, I'm a public member, not an attorney. I'm the elected treasurer of San Francisco. Um, the truth is between my five elections and my initial appointment, I've been sworn in as treasurer six times. This is not any of those times here. Um, more than twenty years ago, I'm being sworn in by um, the fellow you see uh, their, their back on the left is at the time Mayor Willie Brown, swearing in three new, brand-new city commissioners. And this was when I got sworn in for the very first time, beginning my journey in public service as a commissioner for the San Francisco Parking and Traffic Commission. It was my, beginning of my journey to learn about and be part of local government. Um, I learned a lot uh, on being on that commission and the next one that I, the city board that I was on, which led to all sorts of more engagement and ultimately becoming treasurer. And so I kind of cherish this picture because it's, to me, it's a little bit of where this uh, incredibly now long journey began and I'm grateful for that day and everything along the way. So thanks.
So are you saying it's too late if we get a parking ticket in San Francisco, you're not the person to hit up anymore?
That is absolutely correct. In fact, our office might help uh, collect it from you.
Excellent. Thanks, Jose.
Brandon, can I just say something real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
I know, I, I worked for Willie Brown when he was uh, the Assembly Speaker. And to Jose's, the, the gentleman on, on Jose's far left there is Gerardo Sandoval, who I also worked in the mayor's office in uh, in, in San Francisco for when uh, when Mayor Agdos was mayor. I haven't, I haven't thought of Gerardo in such a long time, Jose. It's uh, this, this really brought back some memories for me.
Not, not only is that Gerardo Sandoval uh, who did all the things you just said, but he was also an elected supervisor in San Francisco for many years. And he's now Judge Sandoval, um, as I'm sure you might know. And actually, the third person there, um, the person, the lovely person between us, Rosa Fella, uh, was sworn in uh, as a community person. And she later became my appointee on the depart, the Elections Department Commission. She was uh, kind enough to do that as my appointee when I became treasurer and had enough of one seat to appoint to a commission. Uh, she uh, took it for me at that time and she's been a community leader for many years. Great crowd there.
High-powered photo right there. All right, uh, this is me. So uh, that's my wife and daughter. And this is taken outside the federal courthouse in uh, Bakersfield, California. Um, this scene was uh, where my wife and I had our wedding photos taken and then um, about six years later, we had, had our daughters. So this um, this was taken right after I got to swear my sister-in-law, Vona Torres, into the practice of law. And she uh, is now the fourth lawyer in the family. So my wife is a lawyer currently, the uh, Kern County uh, Bar Association President. Um, I met her through uh, my father-in-law, uh, David Torres, who at the time was the Kern County uh, Bar Association President. And so law was the reason why my wife and I met. And um, you know, when, when you talk about uh, standing on the, the shoulders of those who came before us, really both, both my wife and I look to our parents for um, you know, for that foundation for um, you know, path to, you know, try and build on what they've, what they've done. And we want to offer the same thing for our daughter. If that involves a practice of law, great. We're hoping that she goes into the, into the medical field. Uh, but uh, we truly are the products of those who came before us. We're so grateful on this. This photo really has so many different tie-ins with, with us trying to make our community better for our daughter to uh, to do better than we ever did. All right. Moving on to Arnie.
Um, I, I let folks know, I think uh, towards the end of last fall, that my uh, my dad was a pretty big track star. And uh, that uh, he was getting inducted into the University of Pittsburgh's Athletic Hall of Fame. And so I just wanted to sort of bring this sort of full circle and just sort of share the, the photo that we took. Uh, that's one of my sisters, Jamaica, and that's my, my youngest daughter on the, on the far left, Sophia, with my dad uh, at the uh, at the ceremony. Um, a bunch of his track buddies came back, uh, many of them also in their eighties uh, that were uh, a, a part of this. And I think it was well said, what Brandon just said, that um, you know, uh, um, uh, the fact that my dad got a track scholarship, uh, coming out of a neighborhood in Pittsburgh where uh, statistically, he shouldn't have gone anywhere. Um, uh, is uh, the reason why uh, my sister, myself, my daughter, um, you know, as, as Brandon just sort of articulated, you sort of stand on the shoulders of those that came before you. And uh, and so just wanted to, wanted to share that. And I would just sort of say that um, you know, the other part of this trip was uh, folks may not know, but I have a, my, one of my brothers and my mother are both buried at Arlington National Cemetery. And so we were able to uh, to take my dad back to Arlington and then go to uh, this, this uh, this, this ceremony here. So it was, it was just a, a, just, just a good time. So I appreciate the fact that just be able to share that with everybody.
That's great, Arnie.
Arnie, what events did he do?
My dad was a middle-distance runner. He ran the eight hundred meters and uh, he was fourth in the nineteen fifty-six Olympics in, in the eight hundred meters.
Wow.
Wow.
Amazing.
Wow. Arnie, are you following in his footsteps? You got any uh, running events you're good at?
Yeah, you know, never as good as him, but I try, I try.
All right, Melanie.
If you can, I don't know, if you can pull it up a little so they can see the two hundred. So this picture was taken in March of twenty twenty-one. It was my two-hundredth spin ride. I fell in love with spin in the summer of uh, twenty eighteen. And it's significant for me because I was never an athlete growing up. I spent my childhood in the theater. And um, when I reflect on this picture, I realize that um, falling in love with spin saved my life because going into the pandemic, I lost forty pounds. And I believe wholeheartedly, had I not done that, I'd be in a very difficult um, kind of health situation. And so I'm working on my three-hundredth ride. I'm at about two hundred and seventy-five right now at this studio and um, I, I think I was trying to recruit uh, Reuben and um, Jose, because anywhere I travel inside of the United States or outside of the United States, I find a spin studio. So if you're traveling and looking for a spin studio, let me know. I've probably been to all of them and that's um, it feels good to have that kind of love for athletics in my life.
And I might see a future, a business opportunity with the tequila. You know, you're very well versed in tequila and the production of it. Like, throw that in with some spin and man, I think you have a winning business model.
We will need a, we will need an attorney, right? We'll need a lawyer.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. All right, Chair Duran.
Uh, so there's a little bit of a, a, a theme going on here with some of us and our children. Um, this is uh, my father-in-law on the far, my late father-in-law on the far left, Omar Gandara. His uh, beautiful daughter and love of my life, Cynthia. Um, that's me with the cap and gown. And that's uh, our older son, Diego, who was three and a half years old when I graduated from Hastings in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, he now stands six foot four and he would be out, outside of that picture if he was standing behind me now. Um, you know, just a very proud moment in my life and certainly uh, walked across the stage with him and, and um, it was kind of cool when they said his name alongside mine. So his girlfriend now likes to say that her, her uh, her boyfriend graduated from Hastings Law School. Um, you know, it's a good memory there. That's it.
Yeah. Fantastic. All right, Juan.
Let me get myself uh, off of mute here. So uh, I don't even know if I follow directions right. I usually don't, but um, this here is a picture of us in uh, traveling. So we're a blended family, but this is like my happy space. You know, when, when you, you work hard, you, and you're always uh, going about a hundred miles an hour, uh, you think about why, why are you doing that, right? Um, you invest your time as a public servant in many different capacities, not just here at the state bar, but I sit on other education boards at a, at a local um, university and also a small little nonprofit. Um, and then, and then you look at your family and then you think, okay, you know, we're privileged and, and we've worked hard. And my kids have the ability to have a father like myself, my wife, that can advocate for them. And so I, you know, the, the reason why this is my happy space, but also why I do the public servant side is because, you know, there's, a lot of families are not fortunate to have advocates for themselves. And so for me, you know, seeing my family and getting that energy from them and to be a public advocate for other families, um, you know, that's meaningful to me. And so it's my happy space, but my driving force into doing what's right for the public. So.
Where were you in the picture?
So we were ziplining here, Puerto Vallarta.
Nice.
And they, I, I mean, we're a blended family. So the older one there was like doing uh, backward flips on the zip line. Well, while my wife and my stepdaughter are just like, trying to like, put the brakes and that fly down the zip line. And so, you know, this is, it's, it's, it's all about creating uh, memories with them. And that, that keeps, that keeps me sane.
Yeah, I asked Cassandra if we could uh, go ziplining as a, as a board, kind of, you know, some team building stuff, like jump off the towers. So she kind of, she nipped that in the bud. So maybe next year.
All right.
Thanks, Juan. All right. Sean Salag.
Okay. Well, this is my son. This has nothing to do with law, but uh, this is my son, David. And uh, this was taken when we were in Normandy. And um, we went to Normandy to visit the World War Two sites, which is amazing. Um, my late husband and I had done that um, eight to ten years ago and we wanted to share it with David, who's always been interested in World War Two. And in fact, when he was, he's seventeen now. Uh, he was like maybe ten when he read a book this thick about World War Two. So he, and he remembered a lot of the details uh, from that book. So it was pretty amazing. Um, and uh, as you all know, my husband died just about a year ago. And uh, this was supposed to be a family trip. This was the third time I tried to plan it. It got canceled two years or three years ago for one reason. And then of course, COVID interrupted us and we just barely were able to make this trip in June. Because um, even though I'd scheduled the trip a year earlier, uh, just by luck, France reopened its borders to foreigners uh, about five days before our arrival. So we were uh, it was mostly French people and very few tourists. It was a really interesting experience. So let me tell you, um, and it was a time for us to remember Richard because it was supposed to be a family trip and, and Richard had studied in France and was very connected to France. And I'm half-French uh, by heritage and so I feel a special connection. So let me tell you about this church. Some of you may have heard about it. It's in the town of San Mer Igles. And um, it was one of two sites on D-Day where paratroopers landed. And in this particular case, this wasn't planned ahead of time. Um, they had to land here, thirty soldiers surrounded, you know, uh, by German troops, uh, because they were unable to destroy uh, some strategic bridges with air power. So they had to come in and do it in, and close up. And there was one fellow who got stuck um, on a steeple. Uh, his chute got stuck on the steeple of this church. So he was hanging down. And um, and he had been shot in the leg. He tried to cut himself down, but he finally gave up and he pretended to be dead. And so the Germans um, left him alone. Um, ultimately, he was, he was rescued and the mission was successful. And they, it was one of the first towns liberated on D-Day. So it's a fascinating place. And if you go there, there's a kind of a model of the paratrooper hanging from the steeple. So you don't, it doesn't take a lot of imagination to see what it looked like.
That's great, Sean. All right. Sonia.
Uh, hi. Uh, this was taken December tenth and I'm just so proud of this moment. Um, I have several nonprofit organizations that I chair, uh, one of which is um, the Apple the App Foundation International, which is the one beside me is Apple the App of the Black Eyed Peas. And I am chair of his foundation. We have done a lot of things, um, including um, medical equipment and, and train, training in the Philippines to eradicate a preventable blindness caused by retinopathy of prematurity among newborn babies. But this particular one, this was here in San Francisco. And we were in a press conference announcing our donation to the University of the Philippines, the Philippine General Hospital, which is a designated hospital for COVID patients in the Philippines. Um, um, one of our friends uh, got access to and donated two hundred thirty thousand units of COVID nineteen saliva testing kits worth um, two point eighty-five million dollars. And the first thing when I learned about it is offer it to the uh, Philippine General Hospital in the Philippines. And so this was a press conference where we had a turnover. Um, the president of University of Philippines came over. Um, and on Zoom is the director of the Philippine General Hospital uh, accepting our donation.
Wow. That's great.
Yeah.
Well, I think Sonia wins the unofficial contest for most famous person in the photograph. So well done. That's, that's pretty cool. And when, and when he pulls you up on stage at the next concert, we'll know exactly why. It's some great work.
Thank you.
All right.
Great. I'm, I'm sad we don't have any, we can't do any clapping, any, any um, cheers. We, all of our Zoom functionalities turned off, but that was awesome.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, everyone, for sharing just a, a. Yeah. Thank you everyone for sharing just a little window into your life. And I know that we're going to have more opportunities as the year, as the board year progresses to continue to share the things that drive us, the personal memories. I know many of you got to kind of see my daughter grow up. We had her at the start of the pandemic. And so some of these meetings, she'll make a guest appearance. And so just whenever board members ask about her, it's, it's great because it makes me feel like a a person and not a, not an avatar on the screen. So y'all are incredible human beings and I hope we all get to see each other in person soon. So Cassandra, hand it over back over to you.
Thank you. Excellent job. And thank everybody. 100% participation and we're really grateful for that. I've gotten a couple of emails that in the course of this discussion that will also go to one of the fun activities we're going to do tonight. So again, thank you all for participating. I, I like to say that teams work better together when we understand each other's why. And for so many of you, why is family and public service. And I love the references to standing on shoulders of others, but I also think it's intriguing that we've got a centerfold in our, a living centerfold in our midst. So so thank you for that. And, and really thank you for the participation and be sure that you have accepted the invite to the 5:30 session. Again, that's going to be a lot of fun and a chance for us to get to connect a little bit more. So a little bit back to business now. And again, we will want to keep rotating some of the voices that are taking a leadership role in this discussion. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chairman, who is going to lead a discussion around some takeaways on the, the state bar overview video. So thanks for that.
Thanks Cassandra. Thank you Brandon and everyone for sharing your pictures and your stories. That was really, really a neat thing to see. Such a diversity of experience. So thank you to everyone who, who did the homework assignment and logged on and watched the video. I told you that we would keep track of who did it and that I owed a bottle of wine to the first person to open and complete that video. It's actually Christine Gonong and she's not here, but I will send her, I will send her probably a Bevmo gift card later on today. And we'll see whether she chooses wine or not, but I, you know, I, we're all going to have a chance to offer some input on the video. I've got some questions to sort of prompt, prompt us to, to have a little bit of a free flowing discussion. I will tell you that I really admire the way our technology keeps track of what you're doing or what you're not doing, because you, you have to really stay with that screen open and you have to click the next button to, to keep going. And so I'm not sure about you all, but I, I was really forced to sit there and do it. And it was instructive to me. Let me, let me open up what I would like to ask for the first question. And that is, what did you learn that you didn't know about the state bar, about the board of trustees and about our structure? And I will ask first for a volunteer before I start picking on people. What did you learn that you didn't know? I'm going to pick on Jose.
I was about to volunteer, Ruben.
I saw that.
I, you know, I, I can't say there was earth, earth shattering things, but I, I just, I what really sunk into me was even after what, two plus years of being on the board. And it wasn't a big surprise, but I, I was still kind of, kind of fascinated and interested and and, and again, like I said, not completely surprised that there were still parts of the state bar organization. Because it is very, very multi-part. It's, it's rather complicated. It's doing a whole bunch of different things all at the same time. And there are whole sections of it, bodies of, parts of the, of the state bar organization. That, I mean, upon hearing a description of what they do, it, I get it. But I really didn't know much about it. Still probably don't know very much about it besides the general description of what, what they do. And it, it always impresses me how much incredibly good work is being done by this organization. But it really is challenging to put your arms all the way around it. And I'm impressed by the staff and the leadership and everybody who does and who can and who engages in it every day.
Thanks Jose. I had, I had some similar reactions. Sean, go ahead. You're on mute, Sean.
Sorry. This is like for the last two years. I'm on mute. You know, you're on mute. Well, I want to follow up on Jose's comment because this is such a complicated organization and it takes years and years to have anything resembling mastery of it. And no one has mastered it as Leah has. I'll tell you, her knowledge of this organization is amazing. But what I thought I'd share with you is that it used to be even more complicated than it is now. And that's kind of hard to believe, but it was true. So when I joined the bar in 2016, not long after that, I was serving on the Governance and the Public Interest Task Force. And what we did in that exercise was first create a true organizational chart of all the subentities in the bar. Because it didn't exist. And it was a lot of work for staff to create it. And I would say, Leah, is it exaggeration to say it was almost double the number of entities we have now on that chart?
No.
Yeah, it was, it was incredible. And so then we engaged in a process to kind of really look critically at each of these organizations or each of these subentities. Some of them were consolidated. Some of them were spun off into what are now standalone organizations. And then of course, you're all familiar with the bigger picture that a few years ago, the bar was de-unified. So the associational aspects of the bar were transferred to the California Lawyers Association. And that's another spinoff. And that resulted in a whole structure called the sections being removed from the staple. So, so as complicated as it is, it's not as unmanageable and uncomplicated as it, as it used to be. And I think that complexity contributed to some of the problems the bar experienced over the years. It was just, it really was unmanageable in terms of how sprawling it was.
I'm going to jump in there because that was actually also what surprised me, what I didn't know. And the number that I recall was that there were some words upwards of 700 people, 700 volunteers involved in 50 subentities. Before the split with the CLA, split with the spinoff of the CLA. And now we're down to something like 10 subentities with 150 or so volunteers, which is still of, you know, a, a lot, a lot to manage. But that was the one thing that struck me and surprised me. That didn't, I didn't notice the sheer numbers of it. Anybody else? Who's next? I see Hy-Lynn nodding, so I'm going to just choose her.
Well, I was actually going to say that fact too, because that really jumped out at me. I mean, I joined the state bar just as, just post, you know, the de-unification and that number was like, wow. I, my other takeaway was, you know, when I first joined, I felt like for the first, at least three years, I was like, what is that acronym? What does that group do? What are they responsible for? And I actually felt in lis, in listening to this video, I was like, oh, I actually do know this stuff now. Like it's sat with me long enough. And I'm like, oh yeah, I know this. But it took me a long time. And then when I saw the 57 entities and 700 volunteers, I was like, oh my gosh. Thank goodness. We don't have to manage that.
The flip side of that though was, to me was, you know, how cool that there are that many people in the state, professionals who you know, go above and beyond their day-to-day paying jobs to, to provide service. And so I'm glad, and this is my, my plug and shout out to our colleagues and friends at the CLA. I'm glad that there is, you know, that avenue still for people to, to serve the profession and the, and the community. So sorry for jumping in. Who's next? Mr. Broughton?
Yes, I'll jump in. Yeah, sort of a follow-up on Sean a little bit. When I first got appointed, I called Elizabeth, who was the executive director at that time, and Leah took over for her. And I said, can you send me an organizational chart of what this organization looks like? What I got was, I swear to God, I got this much pile of paper. And each one was like an individual corporation. I couldn't figure out how it all fit.
We didn't have an org chart when we arrived.
There was no org chart. That was it. A pile of paper, this thick, with all of these different organizations and groups and subentities that you couldn't figure out. I couldn't figure out how in the world this organization worked. And the other thing that really surprised me when I got to the bar, and this reminded me of when I went through this exercise, is that the bar really had no direction in terms of, you know, a mission statement or what are we doing? It wasn't protect the public. It was sort of for the lawyers. We had the, the yearly, it wasn't retreat, what do you call it?
Convention.
State Bar Convention, which everybody looked forward to going to, was all for lawyers and everything else. There was, you know, all of the parties and the things like that, that was the most important thing and not what we do now, which was we developed the mission statement and everything has sort of flowed from there. There was a lot of bloodletting. I mean, I really take my, I remember and I just, every time I read this stuff, I think very highly of Leah because when she came in, she had to go through this organization, deal with all of these subentities and these groups, many, most of whom aren't even here anymore or within the bar. They're, they're separated. They're not, for example, the, the access commission. Oh my God. I was made liaison of that right when I first got onto the bar, not knowing who or what anything was. I could not believe the vitriol and the anger that was directed towards me in the bar after my first meeting with that group. And I thought, what in the heck is going on here? So Leah had to deal with all of these groups and all these people and the legislature and everybody else to get to where we are today, which is in five years or six years, it's so much different. So I can't tell you how glad I'm, Leah is back with us, but you know, we do have a, a little bit farther to go. That's what, that's what I was reminded of. I can't say that I learned a lot now after being on the bar for so long. But it did remind me of a lot of things when I went through the exercise.
And, and Ruben? Same, same thing also. And you know, I remember how would I join in 2018, that there were more committees, you know, that we had. And then now it's been, you know, in only the four standing committees, but then there are different parts to it and the different responsibilities and, and the other, the, the liaison office, yeah, assignments and all those. I have a, have a better understanding really because once I, when I would be assigned, I would go in there, but then I was doing more of a catch-up. And so I, I'm really hoping that I can, you know, learn more just because I really could not go through the manual. So it's, it's really good to have this overview of, you know, a totality of, you know, of the whole, that whole organization. That's what I got from this.
Thanks Sonia. Brandon, you had your hand up?
Yeah. So it's definitely been a walk down memory lane, just going through the, the slides and then, and then you know, hearing people's comments on it. It's definitely brought back a lot of PTSD. So I think we're going to need to shore up the LAP program in that, in that area. But you know, there's one slide that really spoke to me and this is really in the context of, you know, the stats that you mentioned, that we used to have 700 volunteers, 50 subentities. Now we're down to 10 subentities, 150 volunteers. And a majority of those subentities have, have found places other than the state bar like CLA and definitely applaud the great work they're doing there. And but during the appendix eye review, hey, what's up dog? During the appendix eye review, the, we, we kind of farmed some of this stuff out to staff, some of the stuff that the volunteers did and really added to the enormous plate of responsibility that they, that they already shouldered. And this, the slide that speaks to that, I kind of call it the hero slide, but it's every year the state bar administers the bar exam to over 10,000 applicants to the bar. Processes over 15,000 complaints of attorney misconduct. Rememberses about $7 million to victims of attorney theft. Allocates tens of millions of dollars to provide legal aid to low-income Californians. And this is a staggering statistic, response to between 150 and 200,000 calls from the public and attorneys seeking information. And we see the numbers as staggering, but when you take a step back and look at each one of those phone calls is potentially a life-altering moment that the state bar is intervening in on, that has a chance to really impact a member of the public. You're where they're in a desperate need, need of information. $7 million to victims of attorney theft. This is, this goes to the most vulnerable population here in California and the ability of the bar to try and make them whole or put them back in a position where they worked before the misconduct. And then like 15,000 complaints of attorney misconduct. Each one of those situations involve real people, real situations and our staff puts in so much thought and just being chair of RAB for a couple of years and sitting down with members of kind of each step of the process and seeing what they go through to ensure this, it was for lack of a better term, consistent product is, is pretty staggering. So I think just the thing that spoke to me the most was our staff shoulders so much, so much responsibility and really deserves our most thanks and, and respect.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay. If no one else wants to chime in on that question, I've got another. How can we more effectively communicate our mission? Some of, you know, a lot of the high level stuff that was in some of those slides talked about the mission, regulation, discipline, admission, access to justice. Let's start with a conversation about how folks feel. Does the organization, how well does the organization communicate what we're doing in furtherance of those missions? And/or how can we more effectively do so? I'm going to call in Mellie since I know this is her forte.
Just as a caveat, as you all were answering that last question, I was thinking to myself, had I listened to Dag a year ago, I would have taken that one state bar training. And not felt so overwhelmed. So Dag, I'm going to listen to you. I'm going to miss you when you're gone. But you know, it's interesting how to more effectively communicate the mission. I think the state bar does an incredible job internally. I think internally and into the constituency as it relates to attorneys. I, I've realized over the course of the year, and I say, because I came to this not knowing anything about the state bar. I mean, I, I, when I was approached by the governor's office, it was very clear that they were looking for an African-American woman who had experience in diversity and inclusion, who, and who felt comfortable jumping in, not having any experience in the legal profession whatsoever. And so and, and that was who I was. And and so what I realized in short order, and it took me a little longer in some areas than others, but I just realized how incredibly we are in terms of internally. I've just been so impressed with how the state bar communicates internally and with lawyers, which is who the state bar serves. Not, you know, no, no one in this diocese is surprised because I tend to shape my comments under the prism of optics, narrative and relationships. And one of the places that I'd love to see us more effectively communicate our mission is externally. And I think I say that because I believe once we effectively communicate externally, much of the conversation that transpires externally as it relates to perception. And I, and I'll, and I'll say, one of the things that I realized for those who have been around this diocese for a long time, you probably have PTSD. Because as I hear you, you were a part of the shaping and the, the chaos and the dysfunction, and I say that respectfully. And, and through that, you had to create order and structure. And that's very impressive. But I think now where I see the opportunities that reside are really how do we communicate that effectively externally? And in the, in the effective communication of that externally, who are we talking to? Because that mission, that message shifts and changes based on who you're talking to. If you're talking to the legislature, if you're talking to constituency groups that advocate for low-income communities or economically disadvantaged or underserved communities, if you're talking to constituencies of color, if you're talking to constituencies that represent the LGBTQIA different orientations. So I feel like as we, as we more effectively communicate externally, the ability to do that in a way where we shape the message, and I say we, because it's all of us. But how do we take that message and shape it to those, to those constituencies in a language that they can not only appreciate, but that they can not only appreciate, but then they can distill through because they'll be able to communicate that to the people that they serve?
Thank you, Melanie. Other thoughts? Mr. Soell, Arnie.
You know, I'm, I'm glad you let Melanie go first. I am, I am by no stretch of the means a, a communication specialist. But, um, you know, Brandon just rattled off a whole heap of statistics that were incredibly impressive and, um, was part of what struck me in, uh, what I sort of learned in, uh, in the, uh, uh, from, uh, from, from reviewing the, uh, the video. And I, I'd like to try to link these, uh, the first question, the second question a little bit and, and sort of tie it into this strategy. And that is, I, I think that, um, so often we're getting beat up about our discipline system and, you know, uh, the backlog and all those sorts of things like that. And one of the statistics that struck me and Brandon just, just mentioned it was this notion of restitution, you know, and at the end of this equation, at the end of all of this, no matter how much we're getting beat up, uh, and it ties into our mission statement is that, um, we are protecting the public. And we are, we are, you know, the, we are protecting the public. And, um, in my mind, uh, one of our communication strategies, uh, tied into some of the audiences that Melanie just sort of talked about is those stories, you know, those specific stories where we're identifying and, and have, you know, specific individuals and telling the story of what it is that we've done to sort of assist them, to protect them, uh, and, and sharing that external, uh, because I think that's what's missing because, uh, all that, uh, seems to be happening to us right now is, is we are just taking on the incoming all the time.
Thanks, Arnie. Mark, Tony.
Thank you. It's, um, when I think about communications, I think it's, um, not to be confused with promotion where you're just out to promote what you do. Um, an essential part of communication is listening so that you can, communication is a two way street is what I'm trying to say. Communication is a conversation, right? It's not just a projection of messaging. And I think that, um, we, we, we need to do a better job, um, making sure that the stakeholders that, uh, you know, like, like, like the legislature, um, can hear in our communications that we are listening to them, that we are reflecting back the feedback that they're giving to us. To me, that is what effective communications does. And that part, I don't know that we always do very well. Okay. I think sometimes we try to divert them. Well, but we're doing this, but we're doing that. And, you know, specifically the question about addressing the backlog and disciplined cases. Um, we, we, we're not going to promote ourselves out of that. Um, I, I, I just want us to really think carefully about communications that really indicate that we're listening, we're hearing and we're responding.
Can I just add something, um, really quick? I, I think the other piece, Arnie said something about strong stories and Mark was talking about communication. But I think the other piece I would add would be the utilization of our partners. We've got some amazing partners that sit on these sub entities that volunteer their time. And I think a piece of communication is the ability, you know, I, I come from the world of advocacy, coalition building and third party validators. And I think a question that we should noodle on at some point in time is how do we more effectively communicate our mission through those third party folks? Because sometimes other people can deliver your message and it be received far better than you ever could.
Good point. Thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay. Finally, Cassandra, let me, I lost the email, apologize.
There I am. I'm here.
Uh, will you take us to the next question because I somehow.
No, no problem. I've got you. Thank you. So let me, um, I have really good comments, um, from everybody. I think the one thing I want to make note of is several of you talked about how complicated and complex this organization is, that it was even more so some years ago. And I love the reference to PTSD. And as we think about, um, some of the discussion, uh, around relationship building with the legislature, for example, if it's complex for those of you who've been around it for a bit, imagine how complex, complex and complicated it might be or might sound to those who aren't or those who haven't, or those who are relying on old information. So just something to think about as we talk about, um, relationship building, uh, tomorrow.
Cassandra, may, may I jump in there? Um, because you triggered something that I was, uh, I was thinking about when I don't remember who it was pointed, pointed out that this transition from, you know, from the old days and the, the deunif, or the, the unified bar. It's, it's only been about five years, right? And, and, and the first couple of years of that were pretty, uh, tumultuous. And, and so we are, we are very young at, at what, at what we are as a new organization. And on top of that, we had what 65, 70, 75 years of, of history that led up to that ultimate deunification. And so I think that we need to, uh, big picture realize that it, you know, it didn't happen overnight and it's not going to change overnight. And we just need to, you know, stay the course and, um, be, be a little patient and, and maybe try to garner some patience from, from those that we work with out there who want to see the same thing I believe we want to see, which is truly protection of the public, you know, uh, letting, you know, bringing new folks into, it's the practice of law in a diverse way. All, all the things that we, you know, we're going to talk about over the next day and a half, I guess. Let's just give ourselves a break sometimes.
That's a good point. So on that note, we're going to take a quick break. Um, Dag, are we able to tee up our, or should I do it on our end? Our, um, our video, we got about a three minute stretch video that I think is fantastic, but I'm older than all of you. And so you are welcome to sit on, um, the Zoom and, um, participate in that for a few minutes and then go off and grab some coffee or, um, check your email and do a couple of things, but we're going to take a full 10 minutes. The first three minutes will be this video to stretch. You are absolutely welcome to and encouraged to, um, cut your cameras off, uh, while you stretch, just so everybody doesn't have to, um, to witness that. But let's take a couple of minutes for the stretch break and then take the remaining seven minutes or so, um, just to get a little bit of a break and get up from your chairs. Okay? So I don't know who's cuing the video, but cue it and I'm going on, uh, I'm turning my camera off.
Standing by. And cue the sound.
Back virtual meetings or maybe those really long virtual meetings and you're starting to feel fatigued. Your body's getting achy and tired. At the end of the day, you feel so stiff and sore, but you just don't have that time to get up and take a break. Well, I've got five moves that you can do on your chair and you can sneak them in and I reckon no one's going to even know you're doing them. My name is Dizzy Willington. I'm the founder of Two Minute Moves, which are bite sized wellness breaks to.
Can't hear her.
Didn't hear nothing?
No.
You got none?
Yeah, it was going well for a minute. Her audio is still out. Yeah.
So when, I, on the, um, top left, the original sound is off. It should be on.
Say one more time, original sound off, that needs to be on.
Yeah. Or in the, in the audio, you say original. Yeah, that should. I cannot touch it.
I always thought it was simply sheer sound.
Share. Yeah, share.
Let's try that again. Apologize.
Are you finding that you're on back to back virtual meetings or maybe those really long virtual meetings and you're starting to feel fatigued? Your body's getting achy and tired. At the end of the day, you feel so stiff and sore, but you just don't have that time to get up and take a break. Well, I've got five moves that you can do on your chair and you can sneak them in and I reckon no one's going to even know you're doing them. My name is Dizzy Willington. I'm the founder of Two Minute Moves, which are bite sized wellness breaks to boost energy for conferences, meetings and workplaces all around the world. So you ready? Let's do it. The first move you're going to do is under your table, you're going to stick one leg on out, bring that toe back towards you. You feel that stretch in the back of your legs and then you start rotating your foot in one direction. Let's go for about five or 10 of those and then rotate it in the other direction. We start to get some movement here. Start to get some blood flowing to our joints. Beautiful. Let's go to the other leg. Stick it out. Toe back and roll it one way. No one's going to know you're doing these and then roll it the other way. Great. And now you have flexes. Let's bring one knee up, then the other knee up. And when you do this, you want to activate your core muscles. So a little lean under, scoop those hips out of it, pull your tummy muscles back and you just bring one knee up and the other knee up. So this gives you a core workout, but it also gets these hip flexes, these joints here out of that same position that they stay in all day, which can get quite sore. Okay. Our glutes, now you're going to take one foot up on top. And so your shin part there is on top of your thigh and then you can use that hand to press down that knee if that feels okay for you. You could always do a little lean forward like you're concentrating really hard on what someone's saying. Ouchie ouch. It's such a good stretch. Change the other leg. Take it there nice and gently on that knee. You can use your elbow. You can use your hand. Remember to lean in. Mm hmm, mm hmm. That's really interesting. Yes, yes. And you're having this, oh, very beautiful stretch there. Okay. The next one you're going to do, I'm going to look away from the screen for a moment for this one. You're just going to pretend you're looking behind you. So maybe someone's talking behind you there. You put your hand on the outer thigh, use the back of the chair and just do a nice little twist. And you can always look back at the screen if you need to there and then the other side looking away. But what's so good about this is that you do get to look away from the screen for a moment. And that is a bit of the key to screen fatigue, busting it. So now you're going to roll down, pretend you're picking something off the floor. Roll down just that your shoulders drop and you've grabbed, it's like you've dropped your pen and then come back with a roll back of your shoulders. Let's do it one more time. Drop that head, soften your jaw, close those eyes, just take a quick big breath in. Big breath out and roll it on up. So you can sneak those in or even better, you could get everyone doing these moves with you or even better than that, you could get me on your meeting doing those for you. See how you go. Let me know. And I hope to see you for another two minute move very soon. Bye bye.
Wait, before you throw away, Democratic headquarters urgently needs you to sign this petition to protect voting rights before the deadline closes.
Thank you for the break, Cassandra.
You're welcome. Did you stretch?
I, I took a walk.
Good. Okay. Excellent. That, that actually really.
Excellent. That, that actually really, I practiced it last night and I really like it and I really need it. So not quite as strong as Melanie. I can't, I can't do a spin, but.
She tried to get you to do a spin at one of our meetings like six o'clock in the morning. Some nonsense. What? I haven't known six o'clock in the morning?
That too.
Mark Tony.
I'm talking about you. I'm talking about you, Melanie.
I love it. Well, I wanna call us back to order and thank everybody for engaging so much at the front end and it feels like a, some good gelling going on. And so as one of you said, it's gonna be really important just to take a quick look back before we start to look at, at the present and, and also look at the next five years from now. And so your very capable executive director has prepared a presentation for you. I would again ask that if you've got questions or comments, just use the raised hand function and we'll, we'll be sure to get to you. This, just from a time check perspective, we, we allocated about 90 minutes for it. We may get through it a little bit sooner, but I'm not worried about time. We padded things enough that there's a couple of things we could bump over to tomorrow, but we certainly do want to talk a little bit about the anticipated work product today and then be able to take our break at five. So Ms. Wilson, you are up and thank you.
And if Cassandra, you can monitor raised hands because I, I won't be able to see them.
Right.
And I had also asked Louisa to bring in other members of the leadership team because many of the things I'm gonna go over, they are much more intimately familiar with than I. And I've invited them to jump in if appropriate and also certainly to be available to answer questions.
Great, thank you.
All right. So as we teed up, I'm gonna walk the board through a review of the last five year strategic plan. And this is gonna be a little bit of an opportunity to congratulate ourselves on what we've accomplished. But also a time to reflect on our continuing challenges and I would, to use more positive language, our challenges and our opportunities. Just as a bit of framing, and I think you all are aware that we are statutorily required to produce a five-year strategic plan. And one of the things that I am personally really proud of, that you're not gonna see reflected in this deck, is that prior to the current strategic plan, I heard a comment from a board member that has really stuck with me. I asked, you know, do you, are you familiar with the State Bar Strategic Plan? And he said, you know, the strategic plan does not live loudly within me. And frankly, the strategic plan didn't live loudly within many of us. And so one of the greatest accomplishments, I would say, of the last five years is not only do we have a plan, but the vast majority, I would say, of our staff, as well as the board, of the changing sort of iterations of the board of the last five years, knows we have a plan and knows what our plan is and we're actually working the plan. So in terms of that current plan, it's organized around five goals. And the first goal really relates to the conversation that you were just having about the transition of the State Bar from being both a professional association and a regulatory body. So prior to January 1, 2018, we were both. And as many of you are aware, that split, that divorce, that separation, whatever word you want to use, was really driven by the legislature. And there was a significant period of time that the bar itself was quite opposed to that separation. In terms of what we've accomplished during the period, we've, obviously we separated into two different organizations. So the regulatory agency is the State Bar, the California Lawyers Association, the Professional Association. With the establishment of CLA, we transferred a lot of our associational work to that organization. And as I think Brandon indicated, that meant that many of the things that we no longer did, did not necessarily die. They just transitioned to what I think is a more appropriate home. With that transition, it is absolutely fair to say that even absent a fee increase, we increased our funding for and focused on enforcement and regulation of this organization. So I believe that the criticisms that were levied against the bar prior to the separation were quite fair. I think we did not pay enough attention to our enforcement and regulatory functions. And that was manifested in kind of a lack of prioritization of funding in those areas. And that did change with the separation. As you all heard quite a bit in the previous discussion, we also completed a review of our overall structure, including our sub-entities. And that was really important because when you think about a professional association, a membership association, you think about volunteers. And why do membership associations want volunteers? They want volunteers because it increases the level of engagement with the membership body. It increases the buy-in. In some instances, it increases the dues that are paid. And so the State Bar was really organized writ large as a membership association driven by volunteers. When you see that number 700 plus, that's more than the number of staff that we had. And as Sonia alluded to, when she mentioned the fact that we created a specific role for board liaisons for the remaining sub-entities. What we had under the prior structure was we did not have a liaison role. There was really no board oversight of the seven entities and no work to ensure that their work was aligned with the overall mission of the organization. And all of that has now changed. We still have both challenges and opportunities in this area. One, and I think this is gonna be really important for ours, conversation looking forward, is that we may have gone too far in eliminating support for lawyers. When we drew the lines between what was regulatory and what was associational, we really took a position that things that were purely supportive of lawyers were likely to be associational, more associational than regulatory. There are some areas where I think we've had to reconsider that. And all of you know, you've increasingly been having conversations amongst yourselves about the relationship between education and professional development and support and prevention. So I think this is an area where the pendulum may have swung too far and we need to bring it back. I also think that we've done a good job of transitioning from being a member association. We are not a voice for lawyers and I think you can see that in some of the debates that we're having right now. We see lawyers quite unhappy with the bar. But we haven't yet quite put the consumer first. And I think that is the next step in our evolution. We are a public protection agency. We are a consumer protection agency. Putting the consumer first, in my view, for starters, would mean that we actually have real consumers participating on our policymaking bodies. And it is only very recently with some of our most recent working groups and task forces that we have intentionally made an effort to engage consumers. And I think there, there's much more to be done in that regard. Also, as alluded to in our prior discussion, the changes that were made to our sub-entity, their composition and the requirement that there actually be work plans, that there be a formal charge for the sub-entities. Those changes did fracture some relationships. So while I stand by their organizational value, I think we need to recognize that there was a relationship impact and it's something that we continue to grapple with today. In terms of goal two in the current plan, this is really kind of the heart and soul of the organization. We're looking here at missions, discipline and regulation. And I'm gonna start with discipline. Brandon, you gave us a great overview of some of this data that I put up on the slide, really similarly to provide context. And also to give you a sense of, you know, we spend a great deal of time talking about the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel. And that does comprise 45% of our staff. So there's a reason for that focus. But our discipline system is not just OCTC. There are many other areas of the bar that play an integral role in our discipline system. I've listed some of them here. In terms of the progress made, I would start here in the far left. You can see a reference to the Workforce Planning Analysis that was completed in 2016. This analysis was comprehensive. It is the most significant organizational review that I have ever been involved in in my career. It looked not just at OCTC, but at many different areas in the State Bar. And there were over 100 recommendations that resulted from that analysis. But there was a significant focus on the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel. And pursuant to that workforce planning study, the office was completely restructured, enabling vertical teams. And that work reduced, was intended to reduce silos within the office, make case processing more efficient, but also to create clear promotional pathways for staff. Also during the course of this last five-year strategic plan, we underwent an initiative to re-fingerprint 190,000 active attorneys. And when you're looking for examples of us flexing our regulatory versus our trade associational muscle, this is a great one. This is a very unpopular initiative, one that we needed to undertake when we learned that we were not in compliance with a statute that required us to receive subsequent arrest notification from the Department of Justice. And in order to be in compliance and actually to protect the public, we had to require all active attorneys to be re-fingerprinted. And pursuant to that effort, we have now significantly increased the number of notifications of criminal convictions that we receive about active licensees, thereby increasing our ability to protect the public, but also increasing our workload. Also during the course of the current strategic plan, we implemented a case prioritization system in the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel. This has been really critical. Because when you hear about the backlog and all of you know, there's been a very intense focus on the backlog. I'm not sure if it's been clear to, to all of you that up until the present date, the, the current fee bill effective January 1 changed this. But prior to, the backlog was counted as, as a point in time as of December 31st of each year. And really that model, it, it created an environment where we prioritize cases based on when they were filed or when they were opened and where they were in proximity to December 31st. If there was a possibility that they would be in backlog status as of December 31st. And just logic tells you that neither of those approaches to prioritizing cases based on filing data essentially or based on proximity to the end of the year actually protects the public, right? The case prioritization system, however, has public protection at the forefront of deciding which cases will advance faster and with more resources in the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel. Also, and this, you know, I could have led with for a success over the five-year period, is that we were able to secure the first fee increase for the State Bar in over 20 years. And that was the result of a lot of hard work to clean up our finances and to increase transparency so that there was enough confidence in the organization to enable the legislature to feel comfortable authorizing a fee increase. That fee increase resulted in new staff for the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel. And it also provided $8 million in additional funding to reduce the backlog in payouts in the Client Security Fund. One of the initiatives that I am personally the most proud of is this, the last one on this slide. And this has to do with our analysis of racial disparities in the discipline system. For me, this is a true indication of our walking the talk or to walking the talk, walking the walk. If we say diversity, equity and inclusion is important to us, if we say equity is important to us, we need to be willing to take a hard look at how equitable our own systems are. And we did this. And to date, as far as I'm aware, we are the only licensing agency of any kind in the country that has done this kind of work. So not only did we do this study, but we have been progressively implementing recommended remediation measures since the study has been published. So challenges, challenges and opportunities. Think it's a reality that we have to contend with and this goes back to many of your comments about, you know, are we trying to ignore the repeated messages that we're getting about the backlog, for example? That our key performance metrics continue to indicate that we are coming up short. When you look back, for example, at the audit that was released last year, you see that there was an increase in investigation timelines. And while we understand the nuances that surround that data, we may take issue with the way that the data was calculated or presented. The bottom line is that perception becomes our reality and we do need to, to address that head-on. It is related to the other gray diamond that you see down there in the far right, unrealistic case processing standards. So we come up short in light of metrics that I think we universally agree, certainly on the staff side, are unrealistic. The basic premise that you are gonna open a case and take it to a State Bar court filing or closure in six months, given the volume of work that we have and the resource level that we have available to us, it's just entirely unrealistic. And yet and still, these are the realities that we face. Quite problematic for us also in light, certainly of the recent events with Tom Girardi, is this perception that our system lacks integrity. And this is probably more problematic in my view than the fact that we aren't meeting our case processing timelines. Because this gets at our legitimacy as, as a regulatory agency. So tied up with that is another diamond you see. This perception that we are disciplining only the solo and the small firm lawyers, letting kind of the quote-unquote big fish off the hook. That in conjunction with concerns about a lack of ethical behavior on our own part, have created this sort of aura, a question about our overall integrity in this space that we will need to contend with going forward.
Leah, before you go to the next slide, I think we've got a question from Chair Duran. And I also want to encourage members of the board to not necessarily wait till the end of Leah's presentation if you've got questions throughout, partly so she can get a chance to catch her breath too. So go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So this is the, the, the last slide that you just, you just discussed and at the end of the first slide, the, not the first slide, but the slide right before that. You acknowledged or you pointed out that we're the, the largest and maybe the only regulatory agency or body that did the study that we did showing the racial disparities. And I want to know whether, is that, you know, is that a message that we need to, the fact that we've taken that, that hard internal look, is that a message that we need to communicate to, to some broader audience in a, in a way that's gonna help us in our mission or is it really more internally focused? And, and does it spill over into the challenges that you were just talking about with this, this aura that we have about us in some quarters that, you know, there's just, there, there's just, there's something not quite right, right? As you said, it's, it mostly gets to the legitimacy of what we do in disciplining the large numbers of lawyers that we're regulating in the state. And I don't, I don't know that there's a, a direct question so much in there as, as maybe a prompt for a discussion amongst the trustees. That is, you know, do we, I'm asking myself, do I appreciate how big that is, what you just said? And do I appreciate what a challenge it is when, when the executive director acknowledges or, or, or points out that, yeah, there's, there's, there's folks out there who question the legitimacy of, of what the organization is and what it does. And my, 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 my gut, my sense is that the scope of what we do, in other words, just the sheer volume of lawyers in the state and the, you know, the huge number of complaints that, that we have to deal with in, in any given and the, you know, the huge number of complaints that that we have to deal with in any given year. And on the other side of that coin, the relatively small staff that we have to process those complaints can can make us lose the forest for the trees or the trees for the forest, whichever the analogy is. Just a, just a thought that's striking me for discussion, maybe amongst the trustees, if anybody wants to have that discussion.
Other comments from the trustees?
This is Melanie. I think that's, I think that's absolutely, I'm sorry, Mark. Did I jump in front of you? Please?
That's okay. Go ahead.
Just a brief comment. I absolutely think that's a conversation that we need to have because I've got a number of questions around kind of the findings of the study. How were they? How were they shared? How were they communicated? How is the progress being updated? You know, I, because the world that I live in is optics narrative and relationships. I feel like that's a place where I forget the magnitude. And I remember back when you expressed in a meeting, just kind of the weight that you felt in relation to this commission and the work that this commission needed to take on and the timeframe in which the commission was taking it on. And that's the ad hoc commission on special discipline. And so I absolutely think that because it wasn't until that conversation, and I think I followed up with you after that, I think that was last March. It wasn't until you shared those comments so pointedly that I began to understand the magnitude of A, what the Farcus study was really in the first place. And B, the task at hand that these three sub subsets of the larger special commission was taking on as it related to the discipline challenge that we have. So I would absolutely encourage us to have that conversation. And and I would say this, the conversation may not just be limited to the board. It may be a conversation that we have with the board first, but then we may need to take this conversation on the road as it relates to co aff, as it relates to folks engaged with access to justice, as it relates to some of the third party, the third party entities that we work with. So that's another piece that I wanted to throw on top of that as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll try and just hopefully shortly. I wrote the same thing down that Ruben did once you said that. And as a matter of fact, when I read through this material before, I mean, last night, that jumped out at me. This is something that needs to be communicated. The other thing that jumped out at me was seventeen thousand five hundred cases annually and only three hundred and fifteen attorneys per year were disciplined. That's a terrible message. That needs to be changed. So we did more, perhaps we did, we resolved fifteen thousand cases. But it looks like we only did out of seventeen thousand five hundred complaints during a year. We only disciplined three hundred and fifteen people. That that's not a good message, I don't think. The other question that I had is, what is the message? What is we're trying to communicate and to whom are we communicating? We've got the legislature, we've got the public and we've got attorneys. And when I thought about what Ruben was saying about the legitimacy, when I talked to the attorneys in town, there's no legitimacy of the state bar with respect to the attorneys. They don't know what the bar does other than collect fees. They don't think the bar does anything for them. I still have scars and wit burns from going into the local bar association, trying to talk to them over various things. So so those are things that I think about when I, when I was hearing your presentation. And I, and I think I also mentioned, Leah, that I did support that the notion or the idea that we've gone perhaps a little bit too far in eliminating what we've done for our licensees. We need to come back a little bit on that. But but these are thoughts, I guess, that we're going to get into later. I just wanted to chime in following up on what Ruben had said.
And then I see Mr. Selig.
Yeah, thank you. So, well, what I would say on the Girardi issues or the problem that some cases are not prosecuted by O C T C that should be. You know, I think going back to messaging. You know, I think for many years, the bar, as a matter of necessity, has has really been sending to conflicting messages out to the world about the statistics and the operation of O C T C. And one is, we try to say, hey, the backlog's got a little bit better this year. Look at how many cases we prosecuted. Look at how many cases we, the volume of cases we process, which is pretty crushing. But then we also say we need more people in that office to do the work. And I do think we need to think about whether we're sending the correct message, right? Because I, it's pretty clear to me anyway, from the Girardi situation and other cases I'm aware of, that O C T C doesn't have sufficient resources to prosecute all the cases it should, especially the more complicated, complex ones. And so, Leah, I don't know if you want to update. I know that your people are working on, you know, renewed study of the O C T C workload and how many additional people are needed. But the study that was done several years ago, in right before the fee increase, if I'm remembering correctly, said we needed about sixty new people in O C T C and we were funded for nineteen. So that tells us we have a systemic problem in terms of lack of sufficient people to do this work.
No, absolutely. Fifty eight new positions and nineteen were funded. So I would just quickly say, you know, with the Farcus study, when that came out, I thought we engaged in a intensive, intentional and comprehensive campaign. I was really proud of the work. The board was proud of the work. Not not proud of the results, but proud of the fact that we did it and we are quite transparent about it. I don't think we have gotten the credit that we deserve for it. Instead, it's generated a lot of criticism and people asking us what we're doing about it and why aren't we doing more and why aren't we doing more faster? And so I think it is a great conversation for us to have in terms of their resource needs. You know, I have that here is inadequate resources. We absolutely are not resourced to meet the case processing standards. I, based on, you know, me coming back and sort of having a fresh look at the O C T C, I don't think we're appropriately resourced to handle really complex cases either. So these are our realities and, you know, I look forward to looking ahead, you know, in the next part of our conversation as to what we're going to do about it.
Leah, let me, can I just jump in here with what I, what I want to, I want to call like a little bit of a silver lining. And that is, you're right that there was a lot of intensive work, you know, leading up to the the studies and then the presentation to the board and then what we did with it. And and I've seen and many of us have seen firsthand and felt firsthand the the really good that it produced in in the body of the ad hoc commission of discipline system and the many, many, many people, volunteers, lawyers and non-lawyers alike, people affiliated with the bar and not affiliated with the bar, who are, you know, working on a weekly basis to try and address the problems that are identified in those reports, right? We're not done. But we have, I feel like we hit the ground running. We hit it hard with a lot of people bringing some talent to bear. And and it's been a while since we've had a meeting of the full, the full commission. And I know that all the smaller sort of sub committees are working. But every meeting that I attended there was, to me, was very dynamic. People, you know, really putting stuff, good ideas out there, really sharing and really working hard. And so, you know, I'm grateful for that and I'm glad for that. It's just not done yet. That's all, you know, we still got to get to the end of that.
We do. And, you know, one of the things we'll have to confront is that Sean, you mentioned sort of mixed messages. We are getting better at the backlog, but we need more resources. I think another kind of challenge for us will be, we're not aggressive enough. We're not disciplining enough attorneys. Mark, you've mentioned this. I have the same kind of reaction to the global stats. And many of those recommendations coming out of the ad hoc commission are actually taking us away from discipline, right? Because they're focused on making our system more fair. And I think that, you know, we are going to have to contend with, how do we create a narrative? Back to Melanie, your point about optics narrative. How do we create something that's cohesive and makes sense that holds all of these pieces? Because they're all equally important. We have to have a system that's fair, but we need a system that effectively investigates and prosecutes attorneys that are harming the public. So I think, again, a challenge and an opportunity. I'm going to move us forward.
Can I just say something? I've got a burning thing that I'd love to say before you move forward. It'll be brief. You know, and it ties into your last comment, Leah. And I think the challenge, and it goes back to my PTSD piece. And I say this respectfully to everybody who's served on this diet as much longer than I have and to the very dedicated team that we have. The balancing act, in my opinion, is the victimization as well. I think sometimes we get caught up in our victimization. That's my observation. And so how do we effectively do what, how do we effectively communicate but not feel like we're always being victimized? And and that's a, that's a challenge that we have to deal with. That's a balancing act. And I think as a group, we've got to think through that. But I think that's an important piece. Because my concern sometimes is we are always, sometimes as we look internally, and I do think that's a part of the PTSD, because this organization, what I realized, has been through a lot and has accomplished a great deal. And I don't want to feel like that is not the case. And I think that's what's so wonderful about this strategic planning opportunity. But the balancing act of woe is me, why aren't other people noticing all the good things that I'm doing for them? That becomes a challenge and and I look forward to us talking through that.
I agree with you and it breeds a level of cynicism that is not productive. I will say that. So looking at admissions, also just wanted to start out with a sense of the volume and again, there's quite a number of them, as you can see. I also wanted to make sure you are all aware that admissions is more than just the bar exam. You have all of these different pathways to be, to become eligible to practice law in California. And one that I want to highlight for you that is another area that I think we haven't done a good job of messaging about is this registered legal aid attorney. Under this aspect of licensure, an attorney who is licensed out of state can come to California without taking the California bar and can work as an attorney for a legal services organization for up to five years without having to take the California bar exam. There are a number of different programs like this within the office of admissions. So in terms of the progress made, here we have really increased the professionalism of our role as bar examiners. We had never done a job analysis, which many of us learned about five years ago, is absolutely foundational to any professional licensing exam. The job analysis is what tells you, what do new practitioners in any profession, what do they need to know and what do they need to know how to do? We've never done it in California after the decades and decades that we've been administering a bar exam. We conducted a standard setting study. What should the cut score be based on what those job requirements are? We did a content validation study. Is this the content of the bar exam aligned with those, that knowledge that new attorneys need to have? So that was a body of work that, again, was really new in the history of the state bar, reflected a turning point in our role as bar examiner. And it ultimately resulted in the Supreme Court lowering the cut score for the bar exam in two thousand and twenty. And in the order to the state bar effectuating that cut score reduction, the Supreme Court cited our study. That was a basis for them being able to reduce the cut score. We also, during the course of the five year strategic plan, transitioned from a three day to a two day bar exam. Again, this was based on psychometric study, not just sort of whim, whimsy. It did allow us to align ourselves with other states, most other states. It reduced the cost of the exam for both test takers and the state bar, thereby increasing accessibility. We revised those special admissions rules. So that whole category of things that highlighted the legal aid attorney, those are called the special admissions categories. We revised those significantly during this five year period. And one I'm highlighting here is we created a whole new rule allowing spouses of active military service folks who are stationed in California to, again, practice law without having to take the California bar exam. So these are all a myriad of ways that we are working to increase access, this time through our admissions function. We launched a new case management system, a sales force, a modern sales force platform by which we are able to have two way communication with applicants and also with law schools. This was long overdue and directly tied to our current strategic plan. We also improved the law school accreditation process. I showed in a previous slide, there's thirty four schools that are either accredited or registered buyer with the state bar. And we have professionalized that process akin to what we've done with the bar exam itself, aligning our practices with best practices of other national accreditors. Challenges. One challenge, and I see this is a significant and perennial one, is there are repeated cries for us to, calls for us to reduce that passing score on the bar exam. We do not control that. Although it was reduced in two thousand and twenty, that was at the direction of the Supreme Court. And it is the Supreme Court who sets the cut score. Yet we are often held accountable for the cut score being what many perceive as too high. Similarly, we are criticized for not recognizing attorneys from other states. I mentioned some of our special admissions categories. But we don't have a broad program of reciprocity where, say, someone who's barred in New York can come to California, take a California, you know, moral character test and then be able to practice here in California. That's something that you see, I think you may have seen it even in our recent letter that we received from the Assembly Judiciary Committees. This is not an issue that we actually control. Also, we're criticized for lack of diversity in the profession. It is absolutely true that black and Latino test takers specifically do not pass the bar exam at the same rate as white and Asian test takers. This is a fact. We've done a lot of work to look at the fairness of our exam. But the reality is we have differential pass rates. And so this is an area where we often face some criticism. Then we have these recent events related to specific exams that caused some, I think, eruptions of lack of confidence in our admissions function. So we had the premature release of the exam topics in two thousand and nineteen. And of course, most recently, as you are very familiar with, the exam soft failures in two thousand and twenty one. Nuvantikol three. This goal is very internally focused, the fiscal and operational management of the state bar. But I have to say here, these are the offices that we're talking about. So really your basic internal support functions. But you will see that there's been an incredible focus during the last five year period on an important resource that is not necessarily financial, and that is our human resource, our human capital in the organization, understanding that that is our most important resource. And over this five year period, we've done a tremendous amount in this regard. We have created new pathways for career development for all staff. We created something called a deep class that people can promote without having to do a formal recruitment process. We've established a training and development program which allows employees to essentially try out a new role for which they may not meet the M Qs. But going through the training and development program allows them to satisfy those and therefore be eligible for promotion. And I really want to recognize the fact that we have many managers throughout the state bar who have embraced these opportunities for staff. And we see staff moving throughout the organization promoting. And that's exactly what was intended behind these initiatives. We also established a distinct office of recruitment and retention. Again, saying it is absolutely critical that we recruit and retain talent. And within that office, we have a dedicated training, education and professional development unit. Something I'm incredibly proud of is we extended retiree health benefits to all employees. Prior to this, it was only our most highly paid retirees that were eligible for healthcare upon retirement. When you think about equity, this is this, this is it. This is where the rubber meets the road. And it is the board and the bar that made a very significant change and an investment because this costs money to do the right thing. We've also implemented a new ERP system, lots of challenges with the system now, but absolutely necessary. We were operating on a completely outdated system and our systems did not communicate with one another. And so that has been changed. Again, there are many hiccups along the way in the implementation of Oracle.
Leah, before you go, you've got another question from Mr. Chairman, please.
Sure.
Leah, I remember when I first came to the bar, one of the things that struck me was your very consistent approach to this human resource. The human capital is one of our most important resources. And it struck me that you were very, very, what's the word I'm looking for? Direct and deliberative about what you were implementing. The thing that strikes me now is that those processes take time to sort of see where the fruit, the fruit bears, right? It's not going to happen overnight. And it's, it's a, it's, you know, time people moving into new positions, moving people out of certain positions. And, and I'm wondering whether you're seeing the progress proceed at the rate that you thought it would when you started these sorts of initiatives.
It's a good question. I'm going to say that I certainly see progress. I can see it because I can actually see employees that are moving within the organization, employees that are promoting. I talk to them. I talked to employees that we have supported them. For example, in becoming a certified paralegal so that they could go from a lower admin level to a paralegal, we have paid for that paralegal education. So I, I, I see it in lots of ways that are individual on the sort of a macro organizational level, starting to see it. We have a lower turnover rate. Now that's of course, I think been impacted by COVID in some interesting ways, but the turnover rate is nothing like it was. We have, I think generally, folks addressing performance issues more quickly when they come up and helping employees either, you know, rise up to the level that they need to be or make a decision to move out of the organization so that we're better about retaining this core group of really quality staff. So I see the change. I think I believe if you ask anybody in the organization, they would tell you that they've seen a change over the last five years and that there are many improvements in this area. I don't know, Ruben, if it's as fast as I expected. I, you know, we're a big government agency. So I think we've done fairly well, but we can always do better.
Thank you for that. You've got a question for Mr. Soul.
Leah, can you do, can you give me a paragraph more maybe on this career pathway or the career development, particularly as it relates to these deep classes? Is that sort of a civil service type?
Yeah, sorry. It is.
Something like that. I just, if you would just say more about that.
Well, if you think about, so say we have an administrative assistant, one and two, or we've got investigator, one, two, and three. Without a deep class structure, you see you've got an employee, they're doing a great job, they come in as an admin assistant, one. You think they're ready to be a two. You've got to post the position. You have to, you know, go through a full recruitment process. That one that you really want to promote has to apply. Other people have to apply, you go through an interview process. And you've done all that, even though you kind of know you're, you're doing this because you'd like to promote one employee. It's actually not a great use of time, nor is it good for morale for all the other employees that apply. But you, you're, you're going through this whole process because you want to promote one, one person. So in our deep class structure, you can promote people in place. Basically, you're ready, let's have you go from a one to a two. And with that, you need to create your fiscal infrastructure such that you can support everybody becoming a two. So there's not like an artificial cap on how many people can rise up. No, you can't go all the way up into supervision and management this way. But certainly within that entry to journey level, you can have a progressive career pathway. We're not capping the number of people that can get into that journey level from the entry level. And we're making it easier for people to advance in the organization. Does that make it clear?
Okay.
All right. So a challenge, a huge challenge is our funding. We simply, we just don't have enough funding as an organization. And this is not just in O C T C. And our funding is dependent in large part on the fee bill and not in all areas, of course, for example, admissions. It's dependent on a fee bill, which has to be renewed annually. As you know, it's an extremely political process. And there is no mechanism for a regular increase of cost of living adjustment or anything of that type. And that's challenging. We have a continued need to increase the skills of our employees and to increase our own sort of technological capacity, our ability to embrace technology and harness technology to help us do our work better and meet the needs and expectations of the public as they exist in 2022. We have continued weaknesses at the supervisory and immediate, I think, first level management level of the organization that do impede our progress. And that weakness, I think mostly manifests in a lack of alignment around culture and the kind of organizational culture we need to create. Another challenge is a lack of diversity among staff at the very highest levels of our organization. We do pretty well when you look at us organization wide. But when you look at where our staff are in the highest level executive positions, there's simply not enough diversity there. Moving on to goal four, this is where we have focused on increasing access to legal services and diversity, equity and inclusion. So I'm going to start with D E I. D E I is part of our statutory mission. We are unique as a bar licensing agency to have that benefit. I see it certainly as a benefit. We are required to report to the legislature every two years on our plan to increase diversity and inclusion in the legal profession and what we are doing to implement that plan. So just a little bit of context, you guys have all seen this, this data. But over here on the left, you see California is now 60% people of color, 40% white. And you see here, our attorney population, 67% white, 33% people of color. So it's almost flipped. Situation is getting much better. This is kind of a busy slide, but I think what's important is you can see in 1970, 89% of the profession was white men. And now when we go over here to 2020, it's 28% of the profession. Women of color and men of color down here, it's about 49% combined. There are disparities here underneath this data when you look at it disaggregated by specific racial and ethnic groups. But for the purposes of this presentation, just trying to present data a little more simply. Progress has been made. So in this space, one of the biggest challenges for us as an organization has been to figure out where can we have the greatest impact on that pipeline? If you think about the trajectory of anyone's career, the pipeline can begin very early. We all know the data and the science around what happened if you went to preschool or not. Your third grade reading level is a is an indicator unfortunately of likelihood of of being incarcerated at some point in your life. So the, the, the pipeline can go back quite far. We made an active decision for the pipeline, the area of focus for the state bar to begin in law school. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit further. So that I think is an important accomplishment, but not one that is without, is without controversy. We've also implemented something called the Strategies and Stories Program. And I hopefully you all are familiar with this. This is a productive mindset intervention or a positive mindset intervention designed to get at belonging anxiety that impedes performance on a high stake exam. We, we implemented this during the last five years as a pilot initiative, essentially requiring the providers of the intervention, three academic institutions to secure grant funding in order for them to implement it with us. In 2022, in the budget, you will be asked to approve next month. You will see that we have codified the funding. We have included it in our own budget of making this a permanent program. And I think that's a very important step.
We've got a question from Mr. Soul.
Okay, go ahead, Arnie.
Leah, this is just on the, on the, on the prior slide, but it ties into this one. Just, I just want to make sure that I understand what the definition of profession is. Is it lawyers? Or is it, you know, could it be others within the profession, paralegals, et cetera, et cetera?
No, here we're talking about licensed attorneys. So these next two boxes relate to each other. We implemented an attorney census. We call it a census where we collect a lot of data from licensed attorneys. And this is really part of our figuring out, what is our value add in the D E I space? One of our value adds is we touch all attorneys once a year through that licensing process. And that's an opportunity. We have a captive audience and we can ask a lot of questions. And asking those questions is we call that our attorney census. And using that data, we were able to publish our first annual report card on diversity in the California legal profession. This is another body of work that we have done that I think is unique for a state bar. We have an incredibly rich understanding of not only the demographic composition of California's attorneys, but where they are professionally and not just what sector, for example, but who is in management and executive positions? Who is partner? Who is an equity partner in law firms? This is a body of work that we have done, established during the last five year strategic plan and really institutionalized, meaning the attorney census is conducted annually. The report card on diversity will also be published annually. We also have held over the course of the last several years, diversity summits to share the data with legal employers and to share more importantly, calls to action. What is the data suggest needs to be done to increase both recruitment and retention efforts and advancement efforts for lawyers of color? So yeah, go ahead. Sigh your hand.
In the census, what's the rate? What is the response rate? How many, you know, what, what did you have a good? Did you get a good number? We, we get all the people participating and what's the universe of the response responders?
I, I don't know, Doug, if you know that off the top of your head, or maybe you can shoot Lisa an email because I don't know. I want to say at one point we had about 70,000. I know that it's quite a lot of data and it is statistically significant, but I don't have the, the number off the top of my head. So yeah.
Thank you.
When, when we first conducted the census, we had about 70,000 responses, but we were also able to impute values based on matching licensee records with the admissions data. And so we were able to supplement that. We had about 130,000 at the time of our licensed attorneys for whom we were able to like pin racial ethnic data on them based either on their direct responses or on the admissions data.
Thank you.
Also during the last five years, we have revised the moral character process. And this goes back to our work in admissions that is directly tied to efforts to increase D E I. We revise that process to align with modern views on prior criminal history. Frankly, you all know, you're aware of the sort of focus on rehabilitation, reentry in our state, sort of the broader conversation around criminal justice reform. And we needed to make sure that we weren't creating barriers to entry into the profession that were out of alignment with that broader statewide movement. And that happened over the last five years. Just highlighting here, I mentioned that our focus in the pipeline begins in law school. And this is part of the data that we found and that we've continued to grow and develop that tells us why that's so important. So you can see here, this is the first year law school enrollment. You look in the first set of bars, that's enrollment. There's kind of basic parity between white students, students of color. But you can look over here at non-transfer attrition and you see quite a difference between white students and students of color. So what we found is that students of color are disproportionately not finishing law school. And related, we have been working with the law schools that we have close relationships with, those that we accredit and register, and also the ABA law schools to identify what works in law school retention. There are many, many programs out there, but what actually works? And a report to that effect will be coming out in March of this year. Also in this space, we've developed an online implicit bias module. And this is pursuant to the board's action. You can see on the far right, increasing the implicit bias requirement. And that module will be launched shortly. We've convened a working group to explore loan forgiveness options. And the idea here is that if you increase loan forgiveness options, you are going to increase diversity of lawyers, particularly in the legal aid, legal services space, where you don't see as many diverse lawyers as you might hope or expect. And frankly, I think there are economic realities there that prevent many people from making a choice to go down that road. When we get back to a conversation, a more tactical conversation about sale of our building, I think you will see staff recommending to you that we tried to fund some initial seed money for an L RAP or a loan forgiveness program using some of the proceeds of the sale of the building. Lastly here, this again goes back to efforts related to admissions and then the bar exam. There was work done to look at the bar exam content itself, the questions on the exam to determine if there was differential functioning on the questions, basically differential performance based on race, ethnicity, and a host of other factors. That report essentially found that there is no statistically significant variance, but there were recommendations included for the bar. And this working group is following up on those recommendations and they are being implemented in a fairly intentional manner by the Office of Admissions. Challenges. There's only two here, but these are really important and I think they're related. One is it's unclear exactly what our role is. We are a regulatory agency. We don't, you know, give out scholarships. We don't have a real hand in sort of choosing who gets to be in the profession and who doesn't. And so we've done a lot, I think, as you can see, but I do not think there is a coherent understanding or consistent understanding about what exactly is our role. And related, we have been criticized for making the role more narrow, particularly with respect to high school programming that had been a focus and judicial, a focus on judicial diversity that had also been a focus prior to that sort of infamous appendix I work. So these are questions I think that the board will continue to need to grapple with. Going on to legal services, also part of goal four. Again, our mission, statutory mission includes increasing access to legal services. You can see here, we gave out $60 million in 2021. We're going to be giving out 135 million in 2022. This makes us equivalent to a midsize foundation and we're doing this, right? Just as one of the many things that we do at the state bar. We've done a lot to advance and make real our commitment to increasing access. And I put here on the far left, some of the initiatives that have created a lot of controversy. One foundational is that justice gap study. We did it and we made a very purposeful decision to include Californians at all income levels, indicating and expressing a commitment to understanding the legal needs, the unmet legal needs of all Californians regardless of income. And that justice gap study has led to a number of things, two of which are the working groups listed here. And while they are controversial and we have many decisions to make with respect to their work, the bottom line is that the board took the justice gap study meanings finding seriously. It took its commitment to the statutory mission seriously. And it decided that we needed to look at new and innovative approaches to closing the access to legal services gap. Also, over the last five years, we have revised last five years, we have revised a program that is designed to incentivize banks to increase the interest rates that are paid on I O T accounts. And the I O T accounts, again, are trust account monies, monies on deposit from clients that are pooled together. And the the interest from those pooled accounts attributes back to the bar, and we give that money out to legal services organizations. Over the last five years, that leadership bank program has been really overhauled by our Office of Access and Inclusion, a lot more focus on it, branding, a lot more work with the banks, and the interest rates have come up, even in a very different difficult rate environment. Another accomplishment is really focusing on our California disaster environment and understanding that the disasters that strike many parts of these the state create an environment that is ripe for predators. This is an environment where people are desperate and they need help. And without really focused and proactive work on the part of the bar and other legal service organizations, people are victims. They become very vulnerable very fast because they're desperate for help. The state bar has done a lot in coordination with legal services organizations to rally immediately upon disasters that strike in different parts of the state. On the bottom, you see here, two very recent accomplishments. This is work that our staff really did in support of important statutory changes that went into effect this year. One, to increase the eligibility requirement for free legal services in California from 125% of the federal poverty level to 200, and the other to include expansions and infractions work, what we kind of call collateral criminal work in the scope of services that can be funded with I O T dollars. In terms of our challenges, again, only a couple, but these are big ones. You all know, and this isn't a surprise to you, that there is a lack of support for regulatory reform as a means of increasing access. You're seeing that loud and clear right now. And that means that we either need to figure out how to build the support. We need to decide that we are so committed that we're going to go forward irrespective of the lack of support, or we're going to have to refocus on those mechanisms for increasing access that are more palatable at this time. Another challenge is, just like I mentioned earlier, with some of our D E I work, that sub entity review did create fractured relationships. This area, the area of legal services and our legal services related sub entities was the most controversial in terms of looking at the work of committees and trying to put some sort of structure around what the bar sub entities in this space were doing. And so this is a relationship piece that we continue to need to work on and develop. Lastly, this is the goal around communication and in for and how we present ourselves, our message and our narrative about what we're doing. Over the course of the last five years, we created the Office of Strategic Communications and Stakeholder Engagement. And this office is responsible for messaging the work that we do and for creating two way communication channels, particularly with the media and with interested members of the public and the legislature. Lots of progress has been made. You can see here, we have increased our social media presence by threefold over the course of the last five years. We produce a digital annual report. We provide and send out newsletters to our licensees. We have an interactive map of discipline that's available on our website. You can scroll over any county and get recent and up to date a discipline statistics and click on it and be linked to information about those specific cases. We've also increased our media engagement, and I have a little stat here that in 2021, we had a 40% increase in inquiries and engagement from the media. Now, lots of that was related to gerarity, but not all. So we have been successful in increasing our relationships with the media. A lot of work has been done over the five years to increase communication with the board. I have monthly check ins with all of you, as you're as you're aware. That's something new that did not exist prior to, you know, this current strategic planning process, the the board blasts and some of the communication channels that we have. All were new and were developed and designed to keep the board more informed and up to date about what was happening at the state bar. And then, of course, a lot of work done to increase our outreach regarding the unauthorized practice of law. And this has been, there's been a particular focus on our Spanish speaking population in California, on our immigrant communities, and working through media channels that those communities tend to use and employ in order to get the message out, both from a prevention perspective and an education perspective about what happens if you've experienced these issues, who to contact, and and how we can help. So my last slide, despite tremendous effort, no surprise to you, the state bar is still perceived poorly. It's difficult to define and measure success. I've worked a lot with the director of the Office of Communications around this question of what are the metrics? How do we know when we've reached that place of sort of there's a positive perception about the state bar? Another challenge is that expenditures in this area can be politically problematic, and that's an understatement. So as important as communications are, as important as things like planning are, strategic planning, we get criticized when we spend money on things other than admissions, discipline, and regulation. And so that's another sort of challenge that we face in this space. So thankfully, I'm done. So sorry if that was long and happy to have more questions or reactions if there's time, Cassandra.
We're okay. Let's get a couple more questions because this is really important, and we'll inform our work tomorrow. Mr. Tony's got his hand up.
Thank you. A couple of thoughts of I want to identify a couple of conversations to put in the parking lot for now, but just to identify them so people can think about whether we have them tomorrow or later. We need to have a discussion as to what is a consumer of legal services? Because that speaks to what is a consumer voice, what that means. And I'm saying that because I don't know the answer to this. This is not a rhetorical question, but it's one I don't know. Now, in my field, you know, I'm in the utility regulatory field. And in that, it's very easy to answer the question, who's a customer? Okay, well, well, it's people who receive a utility service, and they pay a bill monthly. And it's very easy for people to have an identity, an identity as a utility customer, because they're pay, you know, it's, you know, there's a transaction on a regular basis. I don't think that most members of the public, and I want to set aside the, you know, organizations, corporations, nonprofit organizations. Most of us are well served by the legal system because we put it in our budgets. But I'm talking about individuals here, okay, individual people. So I don't know what a consumer is and what a consumer identity means. So I'd love to talk about that. I'm hoping that other people have some ideas to help me understand what it means because I don't. And the second is, I hope we get a chance in this process to talk about organizational branding, you know, and let me tell you what it what I mean. The bar, the, you know, the California State Bar has had a tremendous change, right, in moving, as we said, from the dual role of regulatory and trade association to just being regulatory. But the name is pretty much the same. And so I don't know that public perception has caught up with the reality. There's also confusion that all these county bar associations, if you didn't know any better, and you heard the California State Bar, and you hear the LA Bar, County Bar Association, the Alameda County Bar Association, well, I think a member of the general public would think, well, there there are subsidiaries of the California State Bar. Okay, I don't think that's the case. I'm sure that's not the case. But I'm just saying to the general public, it's, it's, you know, and those are very different entities, right? And so I think we should talk about a, you know, a branding, about how do we distinguish ourselves from other organizations that you have bar and bar associate in their names, but are essentially trade associations? Okay. And part of the solution might be coming up with a tagline. We, you know, so, so anyway, the California State Bar tagline, I don't care what it is. I don't have one right now. I don't even have an idea. But those are two things that I would like to put in the parking lot, and it'd be my aspiration that we have the time to have these discussions as part of our strategic planning.
Truly noted. Any other comments or questions? We did not. There you go. Please, Mr. Cisneros.
Thank you, Cassandra. I want to follow up on some of the things, Mark, you just said. I very much like thinking about how we come across, how we communicate. And and I want to give all due respect to all the work that everyone's done, the organization does. And Leah, you did a fantastic job of summarizing a whole lot of stuff in a short amount of time. I very much appreciate that. But a few nuggets and ideas, I think, that particularly, again, relate back to some of the things, Mark, you're talking about, and these are not big, but I think they're they could be meaningful, is I, I think, for whatever reason, we do get caught up not communicating as well as we could. And I think about some of the, Leah, some of the things you even talked about, right? People, I think people, and frankly, you could almost say nobody knows that the Supreme Court sets the cut rate for the bar exam. And I I'm almost ready to start calling it the Supreme Court, California Supreme Court cut rate, just so everybody knows who sets the cut rate for the bar exam. Stop calling it the state bar cut rate because it's not ours, it's theirs. And I think I'm sure they wouldn't stand for us calling it that in every time we refer to the cut rate. But I do think that when we are talking about it in any kind of a serious conversation, we could do what lawyers do all the time, is they give you the source for where that point, that law, that fact, that material piece of information comes from. And the place that that cut rate comes from is from a publication, an announcement, a decision, whatever it is, that's made by the Supreme Court. So I think there could be, kind of again, picking up on your thing, you know, a tagline, a footnote, a, a, every opportunity we have to to mention when we mention the cut rate, you know, as decided by the California Supreme Court on this date of this year, you know, in this particular communication, feel free to check it yourself. And the other thing, I had another one that's escaping me. Oh, in our public comment before we started our whole meeting today, all the public speakers who were all alike and all, you know, defending the committee, they kept saying, the state bar of California is an independent agency which needs to. And then they went on and gave their their speech. Well, I kept wanting to think like, you know, we're not so independent, folks, you know, I think, I don't know quite how to tell you this, but we're not so independent, you know, if we do what you're asking us to do, we could end up with no funding. I wouldn't call that an independent agency. So I don't know what the word ought to be, but we should probably reeducate people if they think we are an all powerful independent agency. I'll leave it at that.
Feedback. Mr. Soul, please.
Leah, I was hopeful that you would say just a little bit more about, and I think I heard some of this. But when we started talking, when you were talking about the discipline sort of system and, you know, a number of cases and those sorts of things like that, I was struck by this notion of what do we do to prevent folks from ever even getting into that system? And I know we've talked about training and those sorts of things like that, particularly as we talked to sort of the racial disparities sort of issue. But can you just say just a little bit more, maybe just in general, what the bar either does or could do to try and sort of preclude folks from ever even sort of stepping foot or in that system? And maybe, maybe it's not just the bar, maybe it's also law schools. I'm not sure.
Right. So I honestly, I don't think we have done very much. Last summer, I believe it's before I returned to the bar, you all approved a pretty ambitious plan presented to you by the Office of Professional Competence around self assessment modules. And this is really our first foray into the type of work that some other jurisdictions have done, that I would say is a lawyer's support that is absolutely designed to be a preventative mechanism. So that's been approved, it's been funded, the work is underway, with the first initial module being around client trust accounting. So I, you know, I, I, I think we don't do nearly as much as we could do, Arnie. We've got a lawyer assistance program that's very much focused on substance using lawyers. They can voluntarily reach out to the lawyer assistance program and seek support. We also provide them a host of other supports through that program, but our utilization rates are quite low there. We do offer some M C L E around the ethics rules. We have, I think, the Client Trust Accounting School that the O C O C T C offers. So there's some, I think I would say, like a smattering of offerings in the prevention space, but it is not a comprehensive body of work. And when I think about where we need to go in the next five years, this is one of the areas that is top of mind for me personally.
All right. Leah, thank you so much for such a comprehensive presentation. And it still went about as long as we thought it would. So no problem there. We are going to break. I want to be mindful of the fact that many of you have been sitting since the first thing this morning. I'm going to turn it over to our chair to close this out, but I'm going to just give you a couple of bits of instruction. We're back. As you know, tomorrow, we've got, we're going to walk through our key key audiences and stakeholders. We're going to talk a lot more about what we've heard and get start to get some real active feedback from you. So this will be a very engaging conversation between all of us tomorrow. For tonight, we're going to reconvene at 5:30. So get up, stretch, and see your families, check your email. There's going to be an email coming from us with a little bit of a game that we're going to play when we get back online. I would suggest that those of you who want to and or need to get a cocktail or a glass of wine and and sign back on with us at 5:30. We'll probably hang out for about 45 minutes. That's usually about as long as anybody can last on Zoom, particularly after a long day. And but it'll be another opportunity for us to do a little bit team building and getting to know each other. And so I will turn it over to Mr. Chairman to close this out and give us any closing comments until.
Thank you, Cassandra. Sean, do you have a question or a comment first?
Yes, for the members of the public who might be watching, I just want to let them know that the 5:30 event today is is a private social event for the board, and no business will be discussed, and it won't be available to the public. Just so you know, don't wonder, where's the link for the 5:30 meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, for that reminder. And Leah and trustees, thank you for the great presentation of some, a lot of information, I think, as Arnie said, and some engaged conversation, which I hope we can continue tomorrow. In the meantime, I will second and wholeheartedly agree with Cassandra. Please, please get that blood flowing, get yourself some refreshments, and please join us at 5:30 for the social hour. Look forward to seeing everybody.
Thank you.